Okay, all right folks, the light is on, so we are good to go. Welcome everyone this evening. And first, would you like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Allison, could we get a roll call please? Olson?
Here.
Sykes?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Kellum?
Here.
Kupczynski?
Here.
Coburn?
Here.
Kenopa? Here. Okay, we have got some great presentations this evening, and we also have some proclamations before we get down to our scheduled business. So first, I'm going to start in on some proclamations. And first we have is Older Americans Month for May 2018. This one is brought from Cascade West Council of Governments that administers over senior services and disability services. And this is from their request. And each year, we read their proclamation. "So whereas the city of Albany includes older Americans who richly contribute to our community, and whereas we acknowledge that what it means to age has changed for the better, and whereas Albany is committed to supporting older adults as they take charge of their health, explore new opportunities and activities, and focus on independence; and whereas the city of Albany can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by involving older adults in the redefinition of aging in our community, promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, encouraging older adults to speak up for themselves and others, and providing opportunities for older adults to share their experiences. Now therefore, I, Sharon Kenopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 to be Older Americans Month. In Albany, and I encourage every resident, to take time during this month to acknowledge older adults and the people who serve them as influential and vital parts of our community. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this ninth day of May 2018. And in Albany is also very fortunate to have a very strong senior living community. We're proud to be able to have the Minnideit Village in our community that keeps growing and providing such valuable services to our seniors and all the other senior facilities in assistive living and independent. Albany has really grown and sort of became a central area for senior housing, and we're very fortunate because we'll all be there someday, so... Okay. Next is Public Works Week for May 20th to 26th, 2018. The power of public works. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Albany. And whereas these facilities, services, and infrastructure could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, our engineers, managers, and employees, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our city's transportation, stormwater, water supply, and water treatment systems, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the community's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, leaders, and children of Albany to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs. And whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Week since 1960. And now, therefore, I, Sharon Kenopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th to May 26th, 2018 as Public Works Week. In Albany, and I call upon all residents and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public work services and to recognize the contributions that public works employees make every day to our health, safety, economic vitality, and quality of life. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this ninth day of May 2018. So, and I think our public works director, the city engineers, all in the back that I can see, so, and, yep, and public works operation. So we want to thank all of them for their dedication to Albany and providing this very valuable service. And next, I think, is a lot of you folks are here this evening for this proclamation and also some awards, and this is Historic Preservation Month for May 2018. Whereas Albany is well-known for its large and varied collection of historic buildings that date from the 1840s through the 1950s. And whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for economic development, promoting tourism, revitalizing neighborhoods, creating livable and sustainable communities, fostering local pride, and creating community character. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role history and tangible aspects of heritage have in shaping our lives and communities now and in the future. And whereas this place matters is the 2018 theme of National Historic Preservation Month celebrated across America and sponsored by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And whereas Historic Preservation Month provides an opportunity for residents of all ages and backgrounds to celebrate the special places that are meaningful to them and their communities, and the importance of preservation and its place in all of our lives. Now therefore, I, Sharon Kenopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as Historic Preservation Month. In Albany, and I encourage all residents to take time this month to appreciate Albany's many historic resources, and to participate in activities celebrating our heritage. And witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this ninth day of May 2018. Okay, so we finished our proclamation, and next we have Historic Preservation Awards. So Laura, there she is.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Laura LaRocque, and I am the City Planner in the Community Development Division, and also the Staff Liaison for the Landmarks Advisory Commission. And I'm here before you this evening because May is National Historic Preservation Month. And each year, the Landmarks Advisory Commission recognizes individuals and organizations that have served a piece of Albany's history, and helping to promote the culture and history that Albany has. Thank you. So tonight, the mayor will be presenting two Historic Preservation Awards. The first award goes to Rick Mike Sell for the restoration of the J.C. Penney Building and Century Building. The J.C. Penney's building was designed by local architect Charles Burgra, and was occupied by J.C. Penney's store until the early 1980s. In 2009, 2010, the building underwent extensive interior and exterior renovations that added some contemporary elements to the building while preserving the historic character of the 1915 structure. Rick took on an extensive project, as you can kind of see from these prizes here. The original building is there on the left, and then a few different time periods were taken there on the right. And you can see it's just a complete transformation of the building that took place.
Just let me know when the flip...
A little bit slow, thank you. But Rick Mike Sell didn't stop there. In 2015, he bought the Century Building, and since that time, he's completed extensive exterior renovations to that building as well. And currently, work is underway to remodel the interior units of that structure. Rick is not able to attend as he lived out of state, but I hear his son Richie may be here to accept the award on his behalf. Is Richie here this evening? All right, we'll move forward. The second award goes to the Albany Historic Carousel and Museum, and I'm sure all of you are very familiar with this particular property. Carousel opened officially in August 2017 after 10 years and 150,000 hours of volunteer efforts. And that's correct, 10 years and 150,000 hours of volunteers, so just an extraordinary effort by the community. The carousel features a mechanism that was created by a famed carousel designer, Gustav Denzel, and it was created in 1909. There's just, as you can imagine, way too many people to thank, way too many contributions that we could list about this building and the work and the efforts that went into it. So instead, I'm just going to encourage you to go visit, enjoy the facility, see everything that it has to offer, and just appreciate it for the years to come. It's a real asset to the community, and it was a great renovation project for the downtown historic district. And I know Wendy Kirby is here tonight to accept the award on behalf of the Albany Historic Museum and Carousel. Please help me welcome Wendy.
Thank you very much.
And I think there's a few other folks here in attendance, so please come on up.
We've got to have Dr. Goby in here too. So, this is, I mean, I got to thinking the other day, it's just like everybody's heard me over and over over the years, and with Wendy and Dr. Goby, you know how excited we were over the carousel and so proud of that project. But it's really, every community across America can have the same commercial-type buildings, they can have the same subdivisions to roads, to public facilities, everything for shopping, every place across America can be the same. And the other day, somebody came from then that I ran into, and they hadn't been to Albany for a while, and they had asked me, they said, "Well, what's Albany been up to? You know, what has, what is there different?" Well, I could have said, you know, "Well, we do have a new police station, we do have a new fire station." And no offense, chief, but you know, that's not kind of really attractive for somebody to kind of want to go visit the community because of a new police station, you know, or a fire station. And I said, "We have a carousel, you know, and we have done a lot of historic, you know, revitalization." That sparks the interest of people, because it's just every community's character is different, every community has different historic buildings, and also, we have the carousel. And so the lady asked me, she goes, "What do you mean a carousel?" And I said, and I pointed to where the building was, "You mean a carousel's in there?" She said, "It means it's one that operates." And I go, "Yeah." "You can ride it?" "Yes." "Oh, my gosh." And she's telling her husband, "We've got to go down and see that carousel." That is something that is a neat attraction to community, and that shows the character we have in our community, because we can be just that subdivision or a commercial area, you know, that looks like every other building, you know, across America, but not as many communities have a beautiful historic carousel. And, and a beautiful restored downtown too, with our beautiful buildings that we're just proud of. But we wouldn't have had it if it wasn't for when Wendy came to this council back in 2001, and we thought she was a kook, you know? It's just like, what is she talking about, this carousel? But it's a vision. You get a vision for a community, and you get the community together, and it was a community-strong project, and they made it happen. And if it hadn't been for these two were so instrumental in bringing that beautiful carousel for generations to enjoy, let's give them a big thank you.
And I did want to take just a few minutes, I see a few familiar faces here in the audience. The members of the Landmarks Advisory Commission, please stand up. Kathy, Carrie, and Keith are here. These folks dedicate countless hours to help folks review their historic review applications and offer guidance and assistance, so please give them a round of applause. Also want to recognize all the private property owners that put the hard work and dedication to preserve their natural resources that we have. Really makes the community special and unique by preserving these resources. So just want to point out, there are a number of events that are happening this month in honor of National Historic Preservation Month. There's some flyers up here up front that talk about those events and list those in detail. I hope you're all able to attend at least one of those. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you so much, Laura. Thank you, and thank you, everyone. I mean, there's a lot of the folks attending are ones that have put many hours in our downtown and a lot of dedication, and we really appreciate. Everyone's heart is in the community, and that's what makes Albany a great place to live, so, thank you. And Landmarks Advisory Commission, thank you too for your wonderful service, so, thank you. Okay, Council, I think that's it over the boards, and now we have our 2017 Human Relations Awards. And our Human Relations Commission, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, City Council Members, and Audience Members, my apologies for giving my back to you all and for us doing that, for facing the crowd here. Everybody has an internal child, when they see bubble wrap, they want to move on, so... Welcome, everybody, good evening. Buenos noches. My name is Javier Cervantes, I'm the Chair of the Human Relations Commission. I am joined here by Commission Members Alan Brock, Brock Raittens, Chris Ekinawa, and Stephanie Newton Azor. We want to present today's awards, the Human Relations Awards, to some folks who are very important to the community. We are members of the City of Albany Human Relations Commission, as I mentioned. It is our honor this evening to recognize those individuals that I've mentioned and organizations that played a role in making Albany a welcoming place. The Human Relations Commission was established in 2007 by the Albany City Council to promote harmonious and harmonious relations, diversity and inclusion as well, among citizens in Albany. This is done through the recommendations of, recommendations of programs, activities, ordinances, expenditures, and other appropriate government activities to the City Council and the City Manager. The Human Relations Commission strives for actions that lead to positive and respectful relations in the community. Though focusing on positive community change, the Commission strives to help the City of Albany be a nurturing community. One of our ways in doing that is the Commission promotes Albany's strength is by sponsoring the Human Relations Award. The City of Albany Human Relations Commission recognizes individuals and organizations that have worked to promote the ideals of harmonious relations among the citizens of Albany. The first of these awards were given in January 2012, so now it's six years now we've been doing this. Tonight's awards will be given to the winners, one business and two individuals, to demonstrate the commitment of promoting human relations, diversity, equity through community programs and activities. And I must give Chris a props for writing this, this is fantastic. So, so that's it, what we'll do is I'll have each one of our Commissioners hand the awards to the, to the people who were nominated and receive the stamp of approval from us. So the first is we're going to recognize a business. The business that we're recognizing today is Ciberus Bistro. Is anyone from Ciberus Bistro here? So just briefly, over 16 years, the award has, the folks have been here with us, we're really happy that they're actually part of the community, high class, classes of the downtown area, big time. So really appreciate them for sure, thank you. Okay, we have two, two folks that we want to recognize today as well, individuals. Our first individual award goes to Nancy Greenman. Is Nancy here? There's Nancy. Nancy, who currently serves as Chair of the Albany Peace Seekers, personifies the spirit of work. Let's just try to, let's just try to count the ways. I could read this whole thing, but Nancy is probably one of the most active, most resourceful people that I have met. If you don't know Nancy, it's because you haven't tried. She knows everybody. If you want to know what's going on in Albany, Nancy knows. So congratulations, Nancy. And our final recipient tonight is Barbara, Barbara Doolin. Barbara?
She's here.
She here? Barbara's not here? There she is. One of the things to somebody, the person who nominated her, if you're looking in the direct dictionary for the definition of volunteer, I'm pretty sure you'll have Barbara's name to it. So, congratulations. We are very happy to be here, we're very happy to be able to present these awards, and if you know of anybody that should be nominated for next year's awards, we actually, please, seek us out on our, on the city website, and look for us so we can actually see some more people being nominated, recognized. Thank you.
And what a surprise too, so I saw Barbara out in the parking lot, and she goes, "You know, I don't know what I'm supposed to be here for tonight." I go, "Well, it's National, you know, Historic Preservation Month." And I said, "That's probably..." Because she said Barbara Casper wanted her to come down, and she's, I said, "Well, that's probably what, what you're coming down for." I said, "I think the carousel's getting awards, so that must be it." So, yes, so that was quite a surprise, and thank you, Barbara.
You're being sneaky again, man.
Yeah, that was pretty sneaky, yes, yes. But no, thank you so much for award recipients of all you do for our communities, so we are so grateful. So that's what makes Albany such a special place, but thank you. Okay, I think that's it for our special presentations then, so thank you, folks. Next, Council, you have Communication of Accepting Betsy Henson's Resignation from the Transit Logic Tax Advisory Committee.
Move to accept her resignation and send a thank you letter for her term of service.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
She's a good job.
Yep, yep.
And she is now, she now gets to work about 10 minutes from home, instead of having to drive from Portland.
Oh, well, that's good. Good for her, yes. Okay, so now we are going to have a public hearing on our extension of the Economic Improvement District in downtown Albany. So with that, at 7:38 PM, I'm going to open the public hearing, and Lisa and JC, I think you're going to be presenting.
Mayor, Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, do you want it stated in, so the record here, just stated in the microphone, that you'll be recusing?
I did. No, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Yeah, okay.
No, she said I should...
He doesn't have to go back, just not participate in any of the discussion.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Grotto, I'm the Executive Director of the Albany Downtown Association, and we're here this evening to share some information about the Downtown Association as well as the Economic Improvement District.
I'm JC Rowley, I'm the Accounting Supervisor here for the City of Albany, and I'll be here for some support for any questions that you may have about the Economic Improvement District.
One thing that may have just been handed out to you is a little handout about the Downtown Association. There's nothing you need to reference on that particularly, it's just pieces of materials that we have shared with the building owners and other individuals that might be finds of that of interest. So, the Albany Downtown Association is a private, nonprofit membership organization. We're dedicated to Albany's downtown revitalization. The Albany Downtown Association supports local business owners through a number of channels. We actively recruit businesses to locate downtown to help fill vacancies. Albany Downtown Association holds business mixers to facilitate connections between building owners, businesses, and city partners. We share information on grants and other funding opportunities. We frequently meet with building owners individually to discuss improvements and provide tenant support. We consider us a business-friendly environment. The Albany Downtown Association creates a business-friendly environment which in turn helps business owners. We hold many events throughout the year, which run shoppers and diners to downtown. Lots of visitors grace our streets throughout the year. Events include things like Crazy Days, Restaurant Week, which most of us just enjoyed, Small Business Saturday, which is part of the National American Express event, Shop Small. We hold Movies in Monteith in the summertime, and the Twice Around Christmas Parade and Community Tree Lighting. Those additional visitors provide income to building owners through the tenants. We help downtown's vital appearance through our Flower Basket programs and holiday flight So that was a little bit about the Albany Downtown Association. So the Economic Improvement District, or EID, is a voluntary assessment on downtown properties, which helps to fund the operations of the Albany Downtown Association. Many downtowns throughout Oregon and across the country are funded through an EID. We are asking property owners to continue supporting Albany Downtown Association efforts to promote economic development and community-centered activities in downtown. The EID has been a key Downtown Association funding source for 32 years. It was first adopted in 1986 and has been renewed eight times. Notices were mailed to all property owners on March 23rd of this year. Property donors who object to the ID must provide the city with written notice that they wish to be excluded from the district. If the city receives written objections from owners of properties, which upon less than 33% of the total assessment are levied, the district may be established. All written and signed objections must be received by June 13th, 2018, which is the day of the second hearing. The majority of our property owners support the ID. A few that I'd like to mention include Thad Olivetti, he has the Vault Building, Forrest Reed, the Reed Building, Skip Thrope has Sweet Reds and Purse Burger, John Bach with various buildings throughout the area, Matt Janelle Bennett of Ciberus, the Novak family, Novak's Hungarian Restaurant, James and Crystal DeFour, Awesome DeFour Funeral Home, Heath Laundry, and that's just to name a few. So if you have any questions on this, happy to answer them.
I would like to mention, sorry, I didn't interrupt, I would like to mention that we've included an updated map. The first map was incorrect, and this is a more updated map.
Okay. Question? Does Counselors have any questions? Okay, all right. There wasn't anyone that signed up to speak at this public hearing, and this is over the Economic Improvement District for downtown. Is there anyone that would like to speak on it? Yeah, Julie? Oh, no, you have to come up to the podium. Julie quite remembers what it's like forming an EID.
I'm Julie Jackson, I live at 630 Southwest 7th Avenue, and I really just am here to quickly for, to make two points. One is that I want to express my support for the downtown Economic Improvement District and the work that they do on behalf of property owners with the funding that they receive. The second is really more of a suggestion, and that is, more to you as the CARE Advisory Board than the City Council, that they, that building property owners...
Excuse me, point of order, ma'am. This is not the CARE Advisory Board.
Then I'll direct it to the Council.
By having the two, direct it to Council.
To the Council, yep.
Absolutely. Sorry for that. Just to suggest that you would consider making it a condition of receiving CARE funds that the property be included and participating in the Economic Improvement District. I think they benefit from it, and it would be a good precedent to set. That's it?
That would be, and I think we used to, years ago, ask, but it's been a long time since we've done that, so, that's a great suggestion on that. So, it's a good reminder for us on that, Julie, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this public hearing? Okay, all right. Anything else?
I would like to make a comment, please. The city staff, as far as admin for this program, definitely spends a good chunk of time and effort, and we do not get any support back from the ADA. So we would like to request that Council would potentially charge an administrative fee on some of these funds, which is legal in ORS, and if we could get that opportunity to recoup some of that cost. We realize we've never, as a city, taken any funds from the CID program, but we would just like to recoup just a little bit.
But council, you'll need to do a motion to have another...have the public hearing for June 13th to continue that.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, second.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
When we...when we come back with that, could we have some reasons why we ought to do this when we are...if we're going to take money away from the Downtown Association with one hand and give it to them with the other hand, wouldn't it just be better not to give them quite so much money?
Are you talking about for the administrative fee, Rich, on that?
Yes. And it's giving them money via TLT and taking money back with, you know...I mean, it's confusion, as far as I'm concerned.
We will definitely try and outline that for you guys.
Thank you.
Yep, that'd be great. Okay.
To your left.
Anything else, Bill?
Just a clarification of why...what the need is to extend the public hearing. Is it just for that item?
Because now it opened up the public hearing, and then now the recipients, who's in the EID, have one month or till June 13th to be able to opt out.
That's your question here.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on that? Lisa, okay. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. And that's a 5-0, because there's one extension. Okay. All right. Thank you so much. And I think you also had some board members that attended. Did you want them to raise their hand up, Lisa?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. Great. Thank you. Okay.
Barb's on the phone.
Oh, yes, and Barb's back there. Yes. The longest board member. She's been on for years, so...okay, folks, let me get this up here. Okay. Now, we have a quasi-judicial public hearing. Next on tonight's agenda is a quasi-judicial public hearing regarding a tentative subdivision plat for 147 lot residential clustered subdivision with hillside development review and site plan review for tree felling as described in planning files SD 0517 and SP 1417. The property owner is Victor L. Wright Trust. The applicant is James Limerick of Hayden Homes, represented by David Carr and Joey Scher of AKS Engineering and Forestry. I call to order this quasi-judicial public hearing at 7:50 PM. And if you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the city clerk. And...but the signup sheet is already to me. If somebody forgot, I will be asking later if there's anybody asked at once to call me. So, do any members of the council wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact? Yes?
Well, other than email that I think all of us got.
Yes.
I don't know. I saw...I got an email and saw who it was from and recognized that it was going to come up tonight, so I stopped reading. But I see we got it on the desk.
We got it on the...I forwarded off to staff this afternoon on that.
I did the same thing.
You got the same thing, Bill?
Yeah, same thing.
Same thing. Okay. And then, do any members wish to report a site visit? And do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? And does anyone wish to challenge the participation of any council member in this hearing and decision? Okay. For those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code which you believe to apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. At this time, a call for the staff report. So, planner, David?
Good evening, members of the council, and mayor, and staff, and the audience. I'm David Martino, a planner here at the City of Albany. So, I'll start this evening by presenting a summary of the staff report. My colleagues, Bob Richardson, Ron Irish, Matthew Rutgers, are present tonight if there's questions that come up that need their expertise. And so, we'll start from this. This report reviews and evaluates a subdivision application for 147 residentially zoned, single-family lots in four phases on a parcel of land totaling 47 and a half acres. The property is ZONRS 10, and it's located north and west of Crocker Lane and Dover Avenue. The subdivision is proposed using the Cluster Development Standards. The purpose of the Cluster Development Standards is to allow development of lots while protecting or restoring natural features on the property. The applicant plans to set aside about 13 acres of land and six open space tracts in order to preserve natural riparian areas, significant wetlands, and two large oak trees. The applicant, James Limerick, Hayden Homes, and the applicant's representatives are here tonight, David Carr and Joey Scher of AKS Engineering and Forestry. Okay. Just a minute here. Okay. Well, there's six review criteria that must be met in order to approve a tentative plan. And each of these review criteria are addressed in some detail in the staff report, so I'll just go over a couple of those. So, to summarize, there's lot sizes that will range from 4,114 square feet to 15,575 square feet, with an average lot size of about 7,000, an amount about 30% less than the average minimum lot size for a conventional subdivision. However, minimum average lot sizes may be reduced in clustered subdivisions to provide restoration and permanent protections to natural or unique features. The proposed clustered subdivision will, again, develop about 23 and a half acres of the 47 and a half acre parcel into 147 lots, together with eight and a half acres of right-of-way dedication and two and a half acres of stormwater detention and treatment. The remaining 28% of the land, or about 13 and a half acres of the gross land area, will be preserved as permanent natural area under the Cluster Development Standards. Okay. Access for all the lots abutting the subject property have access to existing public streets. Existing streets will be extended and two new streets will be constructed in order to provide access to all proposed lots and tracts. Conditions of approval will require public sanitary sewer, water, and storm drainage in conjunction with street construction in the proposed subdivision. Street improvements will also be required along portions of Crocker Lane and Dover Avenue that border the property. Additionally, the condition of approval will require an existing culvert beneath Crocker Lane to be replaced with a new culvert that will accommodate runoff from a 100-year storm So, the map on the left here shows the city's significant wetland overlay and the 50-foot riparian corridor that abuts it. The map on the right shows the same, but it also shows infantory wetlands on the local wetland inventory, but are not considered significant in terms of city regulation. Those particular wetlands shown in the white and blue kind of marks on the right-hand side of the slide are regulated through the Department of State Lands or the Army Corps of Engineers. Now, the wetland delineation was submitted by the applicant for the site, and concurrence was obtained from the Department of State Lands on August 7th of 2017. So, some of the wetlands that are non-significant to the southeast side of the site will be preserved in separate tracts, but the ones to the west and southwest will actually be developed, and off-site mitigation will be required by DSL. So, there's two Cluster Development Review criteria that a project must meet in order to be eligible for such. And so, those two are here, and they're also addressed in the staff report. Overall, 13.16 acres of the site's total 47 and a half acres are preserved to be...proposed to be preserved as open space natural areas. So, the applicant proposes to enhance the riparian corridor to good quality in order to meet code standards for that level. Impacts to non-significant wetlands not regulated by the city will require approval from Department of State Lands in the Corps. The applicant also submitted a site plan review for tree felling, because the development code requires that site plan review approval takes place when five or more trees greater than eight inches in diameter are proposed to be removed. The development code lists four criteria to consider when reviewing a tree felling application. However, the applicant contends that when the development proposal pertains to something like needed housing, a local government may only apply clear and objective standards, conditions, and procedures. And according to state law, specifically ORS 197.303, needed housing is defined as "housing types determined to meet the need shown for housing within an urban growth boundary at particular price ranges and rent levels." And it includes housing that's attached or detached, single-family or multifamily housing for both owner and renter occupancy. The city's 2006 Housing Needs Analysis concluded that there was a need for housing at both the lower-cost end and the higher-cost levels. The tree felling criteria, staff concurs, are neither clear nor objective. Therefore, they cannot be used as decision criteria for this needed housing land division application. The applicant will address this point in greater detail during their testimony, and staff will be here on hand to answer questions that relates to this as well. So, following testimony received at the first public hearing, the applicant...the application was modified to preserve two of the large white oaks on the property, and additional trees will be retained in Track G. We appreciate the applicant's responsiveness at trying to find some balance between what the original proposal was and what's being proposed now. And right now, in total, based on the plan that all of you should have received at the dais, it's dated May 7th, is the most recent one, 11 onsite trees will be removed and 20 onsite trees will be preserved. And those are shown on the plan that you have in front of you. So, in summary, the staff report reviews and evaluates a land division application submitted by James Limerick on behalf of Hayden Homes. As proposed and conditioned, the application for 147 lot cluster phased residential subdivision satisfies the applicable review criteria as outlined in this report. So, do you have any questions at this time?
Questions? Yeah, Bill?
You just mentioned the tree table, the onsite trees, leaving 20 and removing 11.
That's right.
What about the other table, the off-site, where 15 stay and five remove? I guess maybe an explanation as to why five trees would have to be removed off-site where it doesn't conflict with a house?
Sure. So, if you see where the cluster of the red X's are located on the northeast side of the property on this map?
I do.
Just to the right of that, in the Crocker Street or Crocker Lane right-of-way, there's five trees that are in the right-of-way area that will need to be removed in order to make improvements to Crocker Lane, which are technically off-site, but the development...
I see those now.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Other questions? So, David, I'm kind of struggling with this reason for basically not abiding by the...our tree ordinance over the housing needs. So, our, you know, our Housing Needs Analysis that we did was back in 2005, so it slightly...slightly needs to be updated. And so, whereat in that Housing Needs is pointed out to say that we need to have this type of housing.
It is actually in the state law that has recently, I believe, been amended to elaborate further on needed housing and how the state recognized the need for housing at various price levels. And as such, only clear and objective standards could be used to evaluate such housing proposals. Sean might be able to shed some light, perhaps, on about when that law took effect?
I think what I would add, Mayor, is that pretty much any housing that we've identified in the comprehensive plan and Housing Needs Analysis, in there we identified a need in 2005, projecting out 20 years for a whole variety of housing types, including the housing that would be provided in this zone. And so, any housing that we've identified in that comprehensive plan and Housing Needs Analysis would be needed housing. And it's probably even broader than that, as David was saying. If you look at what the ORS says, it's...it pretty much covers any kind of housing. So, I think the general rule of thumb is that if the development proposal is for residential development, to be consistent with the state law regarding needed housing, we are only to apply and make decisions using clear and objective criteria. And so, with the tree felling criteria, we apply those because that's what the code requires of us. And when we look at those criteria, we come to the conclusion that at least three of them and maybe four of them are not clear and objective. And so, those shouldn't be applied in making the decision. Now, council reaches a different conclusion, and you look at those review criteria, and you determine that they are, in fact, clear and objective, then you could apply them and make findings as you...whatever findings you would like related to them. But what...that was the position that was kind of outlined in the staff report, from the staff perspective.
Yeah. I mean, I just really struggle about using our Housing Needs Analysis as part of a reason for whether we are approving or disapproving a site plan approval for a planned subdivision. Because on page 318, if you look for the projection, which is up till 2025, for RS 10 zoning, single-family units, it lists the need would be 200 units. Well, we've more than exceeded 200 units. So, you can't show off with this Housing Needs Analysis that we're needing more housing in RS 10, is the way I look at that. So, that's why I think this part is not quite...using that as a reason, to me, is not as clear and objective.
Sure. Yeah, no, I see what you're saying. And I think that the ORS itself, the fact that it states that you can't apply anything that's not clear and objective to those residential developments, I think...I think regardless of whether or not a city, any city, has accomplished more or less than what their Housing Needs Analysis projected, I think the ORS applies equally to any residential land in the city, especially those lands that have been identified as eligible to be developed for residential purposes.
Yeah. I even, you know, questioned where back in 2005, we'd said household sizes were 2.43, and now we know that there's a lot more people that are living in the houses, too. So, really, our numbers are really way off compared to what they were in 2005. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you. So, now, we will now take testimony from the applicant. And would the applicant please come to the podium, state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the council?
for RS ten zoning, single-family units, it lists the need would be two hundred units. Well, we've more than exceeded two hundred units. So, you can't show off with this Housing Needs Analysis that we're needing more housing in RS ten, is the way I, I look at that. So, that's why I think this part is not quite, using that as a reason to me is not as clear and objective.
Sure. Yeah, no, I, I, I see what you're, what you're saying. And I think that the, the ORS itself, the, the fact that it's, it's states that you can't apply any, anything that's not clear and objective to those residential developments, I think, I, I think regardless of whether or not a city, any city, has, has accomplished more or less than what their Housing Needs Analysis projected, I think the, the ORS applies equally to any, any residential land in the city, especially those lands that have been identified as, as eligible to be developed for residential purposes.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I even, you know, questioned where back in 2005, we'd said household sizes were two-point four-three, and now we know that there's a lot more people that are living in the houses too. So, really our, our numbers are really way off compared to what they were in 2005. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you. And so now, we will now take testimony from the applicant. And would the applicant please come to the podium, state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the, for the council?
My name is Joey Shear, planner with AKS Engineering and Forestry, consultant for the applicant, Hayden Homes. My address is forty-three hundred Cherry Avenue in Kaiser, nine seven three zero three. To my left is Michael Robinson with Shroby Williamson and Wyatt Legal Counsel for the applicant. And I'd like to thank you for your time this evening. I'd also like to begin by thanking staff for their time and attention throughout this, this process that, that we've been working through for, for over a year now. Planning staff, your public works staff, your legal counsel, they've all dedicated time and attention to working with us before we submitted the application and, you know, answering lots of questions and having lots of discussion as we, we've made our way through this, this process. In light of staff's very thorough report and, and the presentation, I'm going to try to keep my presentation relatively short, try to hit the high points, and then we'll be available to answer any questions that, that you all might have. So, the application package before you this evening, you know, several hundred pages of plans, studies, and narrative represents a team effort. The applicant assembled a team of professionals, including legal counsel, land use planners, wetlands and natural resource specialists, and several engineers. As a member of this team, it's gratifying to present a project in conjunction with a strong recommendation for approval from city staff. And I would state for the record that the applicant generally supports the findings and conditions in, in the staff report. Several members of this team are present this evening and available to answer any questions. And I'll begin by providing a brief overview of the site itself. So, as David said, the, the subject property is forty-seven and a half acres. It's zoned RS ten. I won't get into all the other details, but I'll just say, a critical piece of the context is that the area surrounding the site has, has largely been developed with subdivisions and streets. In fact, there are seven street sections stubbed into the perimeter of this property that were put there as the land, the surrounding land was subdivided. And, and that requires extension of those streets throughout the site. And then there's an eight connection, the extension of Northwest Twenty-Third, eastward to Crocker, that's required for the transportation system plan. Additional constraints include the significant wetlands that runs along the northern edge of the site, the smaller, you know, non-significant or jurisdictional wetlands that extend east from there and traverse the southeast corner of the site. And there's, result is that less than fifty percent of the site area, fifty percent of this forty-seven and a half acres is actually dedicated to lots in the layout in front of you. Over half the site is dedicated to streets, stormwater tracks, and then the, the natural areas that are set aside. So, this project is a cluster development. It's planned to be constructed over four phases. The layout on the screen here shows protection of more than thirteen acres, nearly thirty percent of the site is natural area. This includes the significant wetland at the northern end of the site, the fifty-foot repairing buffer that surrounds that significant wetland, which will actually be enhanced, as staff mentioned, to, to good quality. It's in degraded quality currently. And then several non-significant wetlands and the two large oak trees. Another two and a half acres is dedicated to stormwater detention, tracks C D and E and F. And these will help ensure that all stormwater is captured and contained on-site before, you know, being directed to downstream facilities. This next slide shows the full extent of the layout. I want to take a moment to briefly discuss its evolution. So, the cluster development provisions allow for four units per gross acre, which means that on this forty-seven and a half acre site, a hundred and ninety lots would be permitted under the development code. The layout we presented at the neighborhood meeting, which was, I believe, just over, about a year ago, showed significantly less than that. It showed a hundred and fifty-eight lots, which the team involved in putting this, this project together felt was appropriate based on the site, the site constraints that I had described. And then at this neighborhood meeting, we listened to the neighbors who expressed concerns about the number of lots, about traffic in North Albany, and about some of the natural areas on the site. So, after the neighborhood meeting, the applicant made a good faith effort to address some of these comments, some of these concerns. We reduced the lot count further, preserved additional wetlands, jurisdictional wetlands that the city doesn't actually require be preserved, but we worked to preserve some additional wetlands. And the application we submitted to the city originally showed a hundred and forty-eight lots. By the time we got to the planning commission, we'd subsequently removed another lot in, in order to preserve additional wetland. And in ongoing discussions with staff, thinking about strategies to actually save two of the, the oak trees, we, we came to the layout for you here. We were able to actually eliminate two street sections that allowed us to save two of the Oregon white oaks, including the, one of the largest on the site. And that is the, the layout of the project that's before you this evening. So, it's a hundred and forty-seven lots for future construction of single-family homes, a project that does not require zone change, does not rely on any variances or adjustments to the requirements in Albany Development Code. So, to summarize, this project actually provides a number of benefits to the community, and I'll quickly run through the key ones in the, the next several slides. First, the natural area. Critical element of the cluster development is the permanent protection of natural area. This project sets aside and protects more than thirteen acres of land as permanent natural area. This includes three acres of non-significant or jurisdictional wetlands. Track B in itself protects nine point six acres of significant wetland, the repairing corridor, and the jurisdictional wetlands. And eighty-one thousand square feet of degraded repairing corridor will be enhanced to good quality within track B. All of the areas shown in green will be protected as natural area in perpetuity if this project is approved. The planned street improvements will extend Northwest Twenty-Third Avenue to Crocker Lane, which is planned for in the, the city's transportation system plan, with the seven street stubs stubbing into this property. It kind of looks like, this property looks like a missing piece of a puzzle. And when this project, if this project comes online, it will fill in that, that missing puzzle piece in regards to the street system. Once these budding streets are extended and connected through the site, it will improve the distribution of traffic from the existing neighborhoods and increase pedestrian connectivity. And I'd also note that at the planning commission hearing, the applicant agreed to work with the city to install three speed humps along Northwest Grandview Drive, south of the site between the site boundary and Gibson Hill Road. This was in response to testimony from neighbors, and I want to make clear that we continue to intend to honor that compromise if this application is, is approved. There was also a lot of public comment around trees, and so we wanted to provide some greater context on that question. Based on city standards, the twelve thousand linear feet of street fronted running through this, this project would result in approximately four hundred new street trees. Additionally, front yard landscaping requirements appear to require an additional hundred and forty-seven trees, basically one, one per lot with lots of these dimensions. And considering that homeowners will of course select to plant additional trees in their front yard, seems reasonable to estimate that approximately five hundred, six hundred trees would be planted between the homes and the street, which is the area that's, that's visible to the public as they traverse the, the right-of-way. One minor point of clarification, which staff actually corrected, I think, in their, in their report, but Condition twenty-five, I believe, currently states that twenty trees are planned for removal. But as was pointed out, in part from the, the question from Counselor Coburn, twenty trees are actually planned for preservation on-site, eleven trees are planned to be removed. And finally, this project provides needed housing, meaning in general terms, the types of housing the city has identified as necessary to meet for cluster demand on land identified and zoned as buildable within the UGB. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Robinson to talk a little bit more about needed housing law.
Thanks, Joey. Mayor, go ahead, Counselor.
I'm wondering if we get to ask some questions about the layout of this thing? After he talks about the legal stuff?
They're going to their presentation, then you can, Counselor.
Okay. Mayor Kenobah, before I give my name and address and, and talk about the legal stuff, which I'm happy to do, do you have a time limit for me? I don't think I need more than five minutes.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Kenobah, members of City Council. My name is Michael Robinson. My last name is Phil R O B I N S O N. My mainly address is one-two-one-one Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite nineteen hundred, Portland, Oregon, nine seven two oh four. So, as Joey said, I'm here to talk about, on behalf of the applicant, the needed housing statute. And let, let me offer this, if I could, at the beginning. I'm always somewhat sympathetic to city councils because you're being told by a lawyer that perhaps you can't do something, or you shouldn't do something that you're used to doing. It's an uncomfortable position for me. I don't necessarily like that aspect of being a land use lawyer, but sometimes I'm called upon to do it. And I hope you accept what I do tonight as, I'll try and be as respectful as possible, but I want to impart the law to you. I always tell you, ask your city attorney, these person that gives you legal advice, but I'll make our case. So, needed housing sounds a lot more officious than it really is. But let me tell you a couple of things. And Mayor, I thought you asked a very good question, and I'll see if I can answer some of that from, from our perspective as I go through this. So, first of all, needed housing is so broad that it encompasses virtually every type of housing. And this is a case we litigated in 2014 with the City of Grants Pass, Parkview Terrace Development LLC v. City of Grants Pass. And Lubis says at page eleven, just what I said, that the definition in one ninety-seven three oh three one is so broad, there's really not a kind of housing in Oregon that it doesn't include. But in our appeal that we filed on March twenty-ninth, we went through the steps that one ninety-seven three oh three one requires to go through, and we identified or acknowledged Housing Needs Analysis from 2006, I believe, that, that found this need for detached single-family dwellings. I, I fully agree with you that static plans evolve over time. And so, if you readopted your Housing Needs Analysis today, you'd probably make additional findings. Unfortunately, the Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court have said you're bound by those acknowledged documents. Even if you know that the facts have changed, you make your decisions based on those acknowledged documents. And there's a case called DS Park Lane v. Clackamas County that holds that. So, whatever that Housing Needs Analysis says is the city's official and acknowledged statement with respect to housing needs. So, I, I will tell you, and again, I tell you to ask your city attorney for advice, there's really not much argument that this application isn't for needed housing. Definition is very broad. Your Housing Needs Analysis reflects a need for a particular type of housing, various types of housing at various price and rent levels. So, I, I can assure you, this is a needed housing application. The implication of that is that you're required to apply by state law, and this is something the legislature compelled you to do. You're required to apply only clear and objective criteria, and that's ORS one ninety-seven three oh seven sub four. Your code doesn't have a clear and objective path, that's the word of the statute, for tentative land divisions, site plans, that kind of application that's before you tonight. So, because that's not available to the applicant, the state law says the city may, cities, every city in the state may only apply clear and objective criteria. The shorthand definition for that phrase is, when you're looking at a term and an approval criteria, and you can't have to use discretion or judgment to figure out what it means. Typically, the way to think about it is clear and objective standards are often numerical standard. Does it meet a particular standard or not? Doesn't have to be a numerical standard, but that's the simple way to explain it. And your tree felling criteria unfortunately are highly subjective. And that's not a knock to the city of Albany or any other city. I understand why you've enacted that land use regulation. But the reality is, you can't apply subjective standards. And although I think, Mayor, we set this out in our appeal, it might be helpful if I just cited some of the words from Albany Development Code nine point two oh eight sub two, which those, that's the tree felling criteria that's applicable to us. There are four subsections under that. But if you go through it, it has words like necessary, negatively, environmental quality, uniqueness, maturity, historic value, unique, applicable. All of those require the exercise of discretion to figure out what they mean. And unfortunately, that's what the legislature has said, that local governments may not use in the application of approval criteria to needed housing. So, I apologize for being so direct about this, but I think sometimes that's helpful. The fact is that this is a needed housing application. I don't think there's any serious, serious argument against that. And because it's a needed housing application, and because there's not a clear and objective path for approval, one ninety-seven three oh seven sub four provides that only clear and objective approval criteria, standards, and conditions may be applied. So, we, we filed our appeal, Mayor, based not only in the tree felling criteria, but also on the cluster development criteria in eleven point four four oh, which similarly are subjective. We would ask you to approve the application, but not apply the subjective criteria. Now, may I say two other things? First of all, we agree with all the conditions of approval contained in the staff report. We intend to abide by those. We think it's a well-written staff report. We think the conditions are appropriate, and we have no problem abiding by them. We believe they're feasible to be achieved. And secondly, and I, I think it's always worth saying this, we're not saying that what your citizens have to say is that important. It certainly is. I don't ever appear to local government where I dismiss what folks have to say out of hand. I don't think that's respectful, and that's not the way our land use system is set up. But what I would tell you is, when you hear what folks have to say, their testimony has to be relevant, in this case, to a relevant approval criteria that's clear and objective. If it's not, there's no reason not to listen to them, but it's not something that this council can use in making a decision tonight. So, I appreciate your courtesy in listening to me. Both Joey and I are available to answer questions. But we would ask that you close the hearing and record tonight after listening to the testimony and considering the evidence, that you tentatively approve the application with the recommended conditions of approval. Mayor, I don't know what the city's custom is, but if you choose to approve this, we would be happy to work with your city attorney to prepare the necessary findings for your approval on a later date. We thank you for your time and are happy to answer any questions that you have before you close the record.
So, in reference to the law that was up there, so when was that last amended?
So, what you're looking at is, is the version in Senate Bill ten fifty-one, and that's not, that's what I printed offline. That's not the statute exactly, that's actually applicable to us. What changed from the statute, Mayor, that's applicable to us in Senate Bill ten fifty-one, I should have brought my reading glasses. No, thank you. That's fine. I think the only change is the phrase "all housing." If you, in fact, I could read you...
Well, I guess when I was reading through that, it was in the report of that Senate bill, though, was really showing about cities how to be establishing with their, you know, periodic review and their first periodic review. So, to me, it didn't end up, seem like it applied to us. But what you're, what, let me see if I'm understanding what you're saying, is that by this law, than any application, is to have to, we're bound to what our current Housing Needs Analysis states. Is that right?
Well, one ninety-seven three oh three one and three oh seven sub four don't say that. What I was citing to you, I appreciated what you had to say about the 2005 Housing Needs Analysis, and I think that's a common, everybody says that. Plans age, and sometimes they don't age that well. What I cited to you was a Court of Appeals case that is held, and it's consistent with Oregon Supreme Court law and also Land Use Board of Appeals decisions, that cities are bound to the facts contained in their acknowledged documents. So, even though you may know that the facts on the ground, so to speak, have changed, what Luba and the Court of Appeals would expect you to apply are the facts contained in your acknowledged documents. And what they would tell a city is, if you believe the changes have been significant enough, you could do a new Housing Needs Analysis to reflect current needs. But to the extent where we made our case under three oh three sub one that this is needed housing, based on your adopted and acknowledged needed housing analysis, those are the facts the city must, must apply.
Okay. So, so which I had stated, our current plan says we've already exceeded our RS ten, single-family units on that.
So...
So, I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm one person here that... So, I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm one person here that's very most strong supporter of Oregon's land use laws, and, and I value them because that's who we are in Oregon. And I, but I also greatly appreciate the citizen participation through that process, too. So, and I know it's very hard to be able to get very clear and subject, you know, clear and objective language in any code, because it just, it, that's a part of Oregon's land use laws, and making things to be able to be more fit for each community, too.
May I ask you two things, Mayor, very quickly?
Yeah.
I agree with what you said. There's a tension between what GOAL 1 calls for, which is citizen participation, and on the other hand, the legislature increasingly tells local governments, you can't do this, you can't do this. And so your range of discretion is narrowed. Now, in the case of needed housing, I could offer this very quickly, and then I've got a comment about the needs analysis. Case of needed housing, the legislature does that with the best of intentions. They're trying to speed up the development of housing, they're trying to reduce the costs that are, that are inherent through delay, and so they're laudable goals. They, we want Oregonians to be able to afford housing. So, I understand the tension, and that's frankly why, although I may disagree with folks who speak after me, I always appreciate the fact that they're here and saying something. With respect to your housing needs analysis, regardless of whether it's been met since the adoption, the fact is that Table 4-6, which is found on page seven of our appeal statement, showed a need for this particular price for rent level for this kind of housing. And I'll just, let me say one other thing. I'm not even sure that the case law requires us to go that far. My personal view, and I think this is supported by some of the cases out there, is as long as you are applying for a particular type of housing, that's sufficient to meet the definition of needed housing under 303-sub-1. So, I think it's a much broader application of the law, but we, we analyze your, your housing needs analysis for purposes of filing the appeal.
Okay, all right. Dick, you had questions?
Yeah. Is this your most recent street plan?
Is there a?
If it's handed out tonight.
Then it did, I would assume, I would assume that it did.
Okay. And reading through the 300 and some pages in the report, I came across page 53, and that's a different street plan. And I like the street plan you handed out tonight, and the block is about 20 houses long, is that correct? Another one here in the middle.
The one that you're looking at, that was handed out, that was waiting for you on the dais?
Yeah.
I could count the number of lots there.
And I'm wondering why you took the streets out, that go through those exceedingly long blocks.
So that, that was part of the discussion that we had with city staff, leading up the planning commission hearing. City staff recommended to us that, so we had, we'd originally shown.
City staff wanted you to make the box longer?
So, they had, we had originally shown Lariat Street, which is the north-south street there that would go through that block.
Yep.
Connecting all the way through. Likewise, northwest Whitmore Drive, we had also shown that connecting through. The city, in an effort to find a way to save additional trees without losing additional lots, informed us that those street segments weren't necessary. And so specifically for Whitmore Drive, we were having to lose one of those large white oaks where Whitmore Drive was going through. So that, that segment has, has been removed, and we are saving, saving that tree in track J.
So maybe the staff can tell me how long that block is.
It's about 1,000 feet.
It's about 500-foot block?
He said it now.
It's a scale two-thirds at the bottom.
Okay. So, if I live in the middle of the block, and I want to go around and visit my back fence neighbor, it's, it's about 1,000 feet, I have to go around, about a quarter of a mile. I think that, I disagree with that kind of a layout myself. I don't like it.
We've been informed by staff that that meets your, the city's requirement for block length.
Well, I'm disappointed in them. Okay. Thank you. Question on streets, and it might be an answer, or a question more for staff, but one of your slides that you showed, the cross-section of the local street, and it was only 30 feet wide, and most of these streets are local streets, I don't think that allows for any on-street parking, does it?
No, it does. It does, yeah. We have, a local street is a 54-foot right-of-way. We're showing, I think the paved surface is 30 feet, and I believe that does account for on-street parking.
Is that accurate, David, or Bob? I mean, does this meet current city requirements for a local street?
To my, to my knowledge, it does. When it's, you could ask us, maybe, I might have Ron, Ron I R D S come up here, he's saying, Ron is saying yes, so we.
I guess my issue is, if you park in front of your house, somebody driving down the road is going to go to the, drift into the other lane, if you will. I understand they're not straight. But, but two, two oncoming cars couldn't pass each other, I don't think, without swapping mirrors or something. But on that, that is our current standard?
Our current standard for a minor local street is a 30-foot wide street. You can park on both sides. You're right, if there are cars parked directly across from each other, you don't have two full lanes for passing vehicles. It functions somewhat like a queuing street, so one of those cars has to yield, you know, when they reach that choke point. That's the standard that council adopted some time ago in an effort to decrease vehicle speed. So it's essentially a function of traffic calming. The 30-foot wide street is limited to local streets, and it's limited to local streets that have an ADT of less than 1,000. So all the streets inside this subdivision met that criteria.
Okay, well, I, I guess I like Dick on his roads. I don't like it, but that's not an issue for tonight, though. Some may need to revisit. You know, we had discussions before about access for fire trucks if you've got.
School buses.
Both sides, and school buses.
Fire truck.
Turning radius and so forth. Again, it's not an issue for tonight, if that's our standard, but I guess add that to the list, Sharon, of things that we ought to review.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Rich?
I look at the trees that you are moving away with, and I am happy that the conifers are the ones that are going. I do see a conifer that is staying, what, number 51803? And for the life of me, I cannot find that puppy dog on the list, and it may be, I'm just me, maybe going blind. But, I mean, I don't have a problem with the, with the layout of the trees that have been taken. I recognize why they went. Why did you leave a conifer in there to begin with? Being there awful.
Well, I think generally the effort was made to, if, if either the permitted use of the property of being, you know, lots for single-family homes, or required street right-of-way, or the grading that's necessary to get the site to provide utilities in a way that meets city standards, generally we try to save trees. So if it wasn't going to directly impact a potential building footprint, or conflict with streets, or grading for utilities, we generally are going to do our best to save them.
That's it? Oh, okay. It's, it's over in the, yeah, not next to a house?
Yeah.
Although it is next to the street. Well, 16 inches in it, well, it'll take 30 years for it to really do anything. But then it really will. Okay, thank you.
So, I have another question. On page 23, under the conclusion, so it would be for the wetland area, the natural area that you would be preserving. So as we know, most homeowners' associations are to be the ones that would be maintaining that over course of time, and, you know, kind of patrolling that area, making sure that it stays, you know, clean and preserved. But what if the homeowners' association dissolves, then? Who's going to maintain it?
Well, so, stepping back, the CCNRs that would be adopted, that would basically regulate the homeowners' association, will be submitted to the city with, with the final plan. And so, my understanding is that the city has some sort of parameters for how they want those CCNRs to be drafted, so that these, these permanent natural areas are protected for the city's comfort level. We will make sure that the CCNRs address that, and if there are contingencies or possible dissolution of a, dissolution of a homeowners' association, I think we would want to work with the city to make sure that those CCNRs are to the city's standards or comfort level.
Okay. Yes, we'd want to make sure that to protect, because we value our natural areas in our community, but it does come with a cost when it's put on the, you know, the city to be able to fund the maintenance of it, so, yeah.
Understood.
Okay, all right. Question, Dick?
Yeah, on page 51, you talk about some pedestrian paths. So is the African also looked at adding pedestrian paths to the dedicated natural areas? And do those show on this map?
Page 51 of which document, Liz?
Uh, our 300 and some page staff report. It's on the back page of, back of this page.
From your neighborhood meeting report?
Yeah, the neighborhood. Page 51.
Those were shot down, weren't they? Dated March 27.
Maybe you didn't get our staff report.
So, so if it's part of the neighborhood meeting notes, I do know what that's referencing. So we, we had talked about, knowing that we were going to preserve these many acres of, of natural area, we asked staff about, you know, can we put pedestrian connections through this to make this more usable, to create a trail system that kind of links the entire community, to create amenity for the residents and the surrounding neighbors? And we were informed that the city's natural resource overlays that protect parts of these areas do not permit, for example, in track B, those types of, I guess, development within, within that track, within the repairing corridor, within the significant weather.
So you're saying there won't be any paths in there?
Because the city's code does not allow them.
Because it's a wetland.
It's listed in there.
There's only so many things you can do in a wetland area, and by law, too.
Why, what does it say here that you're looking at adding pedestrian paths?
Because it was something that we wanted to do, and that was something that was communicated at the neighborhood meeting.
So, so this is a report that doesn't really talk about what we're doing tonight?
Yeah, it was somewhere in the neighborhood meeting that happened a year ago.
Oh, okay.
And the sentence right after it indicates that the staff indicated that would conflict with the development code.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Any other comments?
Mayor, yes. Counselor Olson asked about the block link, and I apologize, I don't have the council packet paginations, so I refer to it as page 5 of the staff report that was available online. But if you look at conclusion 1.4, that explains why that block link is allowed under the Albany Development Code.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Please, for.
So now we will, now be taking public testimony, first from those in favor of the applications, followed by those in opposition or with concerns, and finally, from anyone who's neutral. As I recognize you, please come to the podium, state your full name and address, spell your last name, and make any comments you may have for the council's consideration. If anyone wishes to enter and exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe it and then present it to the city clerk. So, who signed up on the list to want to speak was, everybody had signed the, on the, who's in opposition to the application. So is there anyone that would like to speak that is in favor of the application? Okay, all right. Seen anyone? So with that, and I think if, if not everybody had signed up on this, we will give you the opportunity to, to still be able to come forward and speak. So, we don't give, you know, we don't have time limits. We do for, on our hearings, we just want to make sure and kind of request that you do keep your comments timely and try not to repeat information that somebody else has already just repeated. We want to make sure everybody that has that opportunity to be able to be a part of the record, so your, your name is going to be a part of the record for, for over this application on that. Okay? Thank you. And so next, so the first one who signed up in this would be in opposition would be Deb Merchant. Okay, Deb? And then if you spell your name, last name, and your address.
Good evening. My name is Deb Merchant, M.E.R.C.H.A.N.T. I live at 1882 Northwest Park Carus in Albany, Oregon 97321. This is my third public hearing and second public testimony. Thank you for asking good questions and being thoughtful and considerate in all of the issues. These decisions are never easy. Being opposed to this application, my first and top priority is the natural habitat. As we continue to chip away at our natural resources and our wildlife habitat, we also chip away and reduce our quality of life. There's been plenty of time spent on that, so I'll let others speak on that particular topic. One of my other big concerns, though, are the traffic issues. And what I like to do is go to page eight of the staff report, section 4.14, fourth bullet in particular, it refers to the roundabout, and I live very close to that roundabout, so I'm familiar with it. I drive through that every day. And it describes in that staff report that the traffic volume would not meet the city's performance standard in either year, referencing years 2022 or 2027. Page nine of the staff report, same section, on the last bullet, describes how the Spring Hill Drive and Highway 20 intersection will, as a result of increased traffic volume, fail to meet ODOT standards, Oregon Department of Transportation, in years 2022 and 2027. And funding for those improvements have not yet been achieved, and no schedule has been attempted. So I'm really concerned, because traffic is simply not just traffic. It increases water pollution, air pollution, noise pollution. It increases collisions between cars, between cars and wildlife, and it reduces the ability of people to walk the streets. We have a reduced pedestrian-friendly environment. And one of the things that brought me to Albany is because the developments, like the one proposed, that are so prevalent that people are leaving. It's suffocating to live in an area where development after development after development takes place without thoughtful consideration for all of the things that bring quality of life to everyone who lives here. Your decisions are not easy, and so I appreciate the time and the opportunity to bring these opinions to you, and I hope to have more discussions, because I think there are alternatives that the Victor L. Wright Trust, owner of that land, can consider, rather than just I think one of the things that I have for my own personal vision for Albany is where we have a diversity within our community. We have small farms, like Spring Hill Farm. They're one of my neighbors. I meet them at the Harvers Market. I can actually ride my bike down to their place and have conversation with their staff. That's an opportunity I would love to have more often in our neighborhoods all around. So again, thank you. I will leave this letter as part of my testimony. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Deb. Next is Mark Azavito.
It's been a while since I've been in the focus of some new places, and so.
Yeah.
I just.
Welcome back.
Folks that have been here a long time are still in the trenches doing this, on every other week. I just don't know how you folks.
Let's refresh.
So I appreciate that. I'm going to just, right up front, I'm going to.
Mark your, mark your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mark Azavito. It's A-Z-E-V-E-D-O, 1210 Northwest Skyland Drive.
What's this?
Skyland Drive. Right up front, I'm, I. Right up front, I would request that the entire record from the planning commission hearings on the Pheasant Run subdivision application be made a part of the city council's record, that those who submitted testimony written or oral have standing in the council's hearing, and that the council grant continuation on this hearing to allow sufficient time to review the planning commission record. There was a significant amount of community input into the record at the planning commission level. I think it would be a disservice to the community to not take the time to consider what is in that record, and that that record have standing before this body. So before I proceed, I would like to know whether that is something that you folks would consider.
Is this, or is this not a separate hearing?
Yeah, this is an appeals to de novo hearing. If this was the go-to Luba, then that part would be part of the record, but tonight, they're not to consider, or they don't have time, the council tonight doesn't have time to go back and look at the planning commission's deliberations and the record because of the, and I'm not sure if you were here before when we talked about this, but there's a 120-day clock, a land use decision has to be made on. We've extended that. Tonight is the night we have to have a hearing. We will have a decision tonight, and those findings will be presented at the 23rd, May 23rd council meeting, and then, because the 120-day clock was extended until May the 25th, doesn't leave the council time to do that. And it wouldn't be, really wouldn't be appropriate anyway in a de novo hearing, which is a new hearing.
Yeah, in the past, I requested that in previous discussions, and it's been approved in the past, so.
Right.
I appreciate your input. I understand the timeline for the Luba process. But it's my, so that I understand you, that the planning commission testimony can be a part of the record for the Luba case.
If it goes to Luba, it would likely be put in the packet, yeah.
And folks that made those submissions would have standing?
They would have standing, but their testimony and this would not be part of the record. It would be the findings of the planning commission that would be in the record.
Which was opposed to the test? All right, Mark.
No, well, the planning commission, I think, the testimony was against the majority of the.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so the majority of it was against the project, so.
Having been around here for a long time, I, I don't know if you folks are a little bothered, but I'm a little bothered by this new land use law that the developer has put forward to us, and I'm going to offer sort of another perspective on this. So the developer has asserted that Albany's tree felling criteria and other code are neither clear nor objective, therefore conflicting with ORS 197.307/4, and rendering them inapplicable as decision-making criteria. So the city staff met privately with the legal counsel for the developer prior to the second planning commission meeting, and now the staff at the planning commission second session, and this evening, they have come out basically stating that they've made a legal finding that the city's code does not meet clear and concise criteria as outlined by the developer. But what I would argue is, is the city has placed, those of us that are in a position of being a part of this process and having due process to appeal this decision, have had that due process tainted by a decision made by staff that the city's own code does not meet standards without it actually being tested in a higher legal system. So I, I think that this issue is ripe for a Luba appeal simply on the fact that the right of due process to the appeal process had been compromised by a decision made by staff without a higher authority determining whether the city's legal code stands or doesn't stand in this issue, regardless of what the historic Luba's findings are. I've reviewed the gold 10 headnotes for ORS 197.307. I haven't found anything in there where the challenge has come from a person who wants to appeal a decision, and I feel that there's an opportunity for this. I think all of us as Oregonians would hate to have a situation where the history and the, and the law that we've all come to cherish, that makes Oregon special, is trampled by a decision that says local authorities can't make decisions that are best for their community and have some non-clear and concise decision-making process in their land use decision-making processes. And just to be, I'll try to make this brief, what's at stake in this conversation relative to the tree code is, and what hasn't been talked about at all by the developer, they talked about saving two oak trees. There's 10 oak trees that are being removed. All of them are in the 150 to 225-year-old age class. The cities, or the, excuse me, the developers, foresters, said that they were non-significant relative to wildlife. I will submit some documents that would state otherwise with regards to open can of the historic mature Oregon white oaks and their wildlife benefits in grass seed production fields and in urban areas. And although this might play out that legally, we don't have any standing relative to our code, I think it's imperative that the council and the, and the community come together and do what needs to be done to meet these criteria if they're imposed on us, so that the community can maintain a unique environment relative to what the community wants to do with its community. Thank you. So here are these papers.
Mark, turn them in at the corner.
Yeah. And also, I'd like to give this to planning. It was put out by Metro. It's conserving Oregon white oak in urban and suburban landscapes. It's for you folks to take a look at, and in the future, perhaps, we can all review what's best to manage what uniqueness we have here in the community relative to the white oak.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Mark has been our best steward of white oak trees throughout all of Albany, and he knows just about every one of them, I think, over the years, and he's essential of establishing our sawing for schools program, too. So thank you. Thank you, Mark. Okay. All right. Next is Bill Root.
My name is William Root, R-O-T. I live at 2634 Northwest Valley View in North Albany. Originally, I was going to talk about my opposition based on the fact that it was going to be a cluster development, but listening to what the developer has to say is that the average lot size is going to be 7,000 square feet. It's only RS10, so it's not much smaller lot size average than what would actually be required by RS10. A large part of the property is going to be left to open space and wetlands, and I think that I agree with that 100%. As far as the tree removal, I think Mark did an excellent job of reporting to you that some of these trees are what they call historic or heritage trees. Some of these trees are 150 to 250 years old. They were here prior to the state of Oregon. They were here prior to the city of Albany. They were here during the time of the occupation of the Native Americans. It's not a stretch to figure that sometime in the past, Native Americans have probably even been on this property. Native Americans at that time were hunter-gatherers. They gathered fruit, berries, nuts, edible vegetables, and medicinal plants. The hunting included deer and elk and smaller game. At this time, I have seen an elk in that area. I have also counted a number of deer in that area. We have deer in my property all the time. As a matter of fact, I have a picture of two deer in my backyard eating out of the bird feeder. So I assume that, you know, 200 years from now, before that, there would probably be still deer here at that time. What I do want to talk about, though, is the transportation system. I was privileged to listen to a recording from Ron Irish when he talked to the city council at a recent work session. One of the things that he said was that there are four intersections in North Albany that are at or near capacity at this time. That's the Crocker and Gibson Hill, Gibson Hill at North Albany at the roundabout, North Albany at Highway 20, and Highway 20 at Spring Hill. All four of those have problems now. If you add another 147 houses, lots to this property, that means probably 300 or more vehicles, and of those 300 vehicles, 300 trips in the morning and 300 trips in the afternoon. That's a total of 600 more trips just from that development. I'm going to relate something that has happened to me this year. I had a 11 o'clock doctor's appointment across from the Samaritan Hospital. I left my house at 10 o'clock in order to give myself plenty of time to get there. I was one hour late getting to my doctor's appointment. That means it took me two hours to drive five miles. That tells you exactly where the problem lies. I didn't have any problem until I got down to the intersection of Highway 20, and I sat there for a long time, waiting to get out on Highway 20. Once I was on Highway 20, I'd probably stood there for another 35, 40 minutes, waiting to get to the bridge. Once I got to the bridge, I had to wait another 20 minutes to get across the bridge, and once I got on the other side of the bridge and in downtown Albany, it was fine. The problem is the bridge. The problem is, that's where the congestion is. The problem is, we have a lot of traffic on Highway 20. The problem is, we have a lot of traffic in North Albany. The problem is, one of the things that's stated by Ron Irish at that talk was nothing we can do about it. It's only going to get worse. One of the things that's going on right now in North Albany, there's a development called Albany Heights. It's in the process of building, completion of a number of houses, 25, 30 houses, and they're going to add another 50 or so vehicle trips in the morning and in the afternoon. In addition to that, there is another 48 housing lots off of Squire that's in the process of being built right now. None of those houses are occupied yet. Those would be another 50 to 100 vehicle trips every day. In addition to that, there's a apartment complex on Hickory. It's a large apartment complex that's in the process of being built right now. None of those are occupied. That's been around another couple of hundred trips every morning and every afternoon. In addition to that, there's another 40 unit apartment complex that is asking for an approval on Hickory Street east of North Albany. You add another 148, 47 from this, the problem is, it's, it's not going to work. The problem, oh, before I get too much farther, I want to read something. This came from the Community Development Department of the city of Albany. I'm just going to read the part that is referenced to this particular application. And I quote, "The proposed application will be evaluated for consistency with the review criteria contained in Albany Democrat, excuse me, Albany Development Code 2.450. The use must also meet applicable city development standards found in the Albany Development The approval criteria and standards for this request cite Plan Review Albany Development Code 2.450. Subsection number three, "The transportation system can safely and adequately accommodate the proposed development." It can't. That's the bottom line. Ron Irish reiterated that same thing at his discussion sometime back at one of your work sessions. The problem is only going to get worse, and there's nothing we can do about it. The only way you can help that problem is another bridge, and I don't think that's going to happen, not in my lifetime. I'm going to complete my dissertation with one thing. I think it's imperative that the city council support the planning commission in their denial of this application.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Okay, the next person, boy, I don't know, it's hard to read the last name. It looks like Cord Wood.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that your name?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. I thought somebody was wanting, writing down that they've got a quart of wood here, so.
Just one.
Sorry, I didn't get that. Well, at least I did guess it right here, so. Okay, Mr. Wood, so then you can also state your address, too.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Cord Wood. I live at 2026 North Heights Northwest. My lot is one of the neighboring lots to the proposed development. I would like to begin tonight by expressing my gratitude to the city for listening. I've spoken at both of the previous hearings, and at both of those hearings, I've spoken about concerns with current problems and what I would anticipate as increased issues with surface water drainage should this development be approved, and the city listened and has been working on the problem as it exists today, so I would like to say thank you for that. However, not all my concerns have been evaded. The current zoning for the area for the proposed development is RS10, which is 10,000 square foot lots. I've spent a lot of time recently reviewing the city development code, and in the code, I don't see any requirement for the city to approve 4,800 square foot lots. And this lot size, I believe, results in more than four residential units on one acre, which would be in conflict with the city code 11.495. I understand cluster developments are allowed, however, the developer must per the city code 11450, provide a minimum of 20% of the site as permanent natural area. Included in the calculation for natural area are easements where current high-tension power lines go over, and I'm not sure how that gets included in the calculation, as I'm not sure who would have control of that going forward. I don't see how that can be set aside. The power company would still have that as an easement and be able to do with it somewhat as they please, I assume. The street improvements don't occur until phase two of the project in particular, the street improvements to Dover. Dover, in the section adjacent to my residence, is already a substandard city street, and that's without the additional vehicle and construction traffic that it would, would hold if the approval happens. The city's standards for tree felling have been thoroughly discussed up to this point, and I won't go into, into the further detail, but like my wife said at the last public hearing, and probably much more eloquently than I'm speaking to you tonight, planning than I'm speaking to you tonight, planning codes exist to maintain the character and livability of a community. Doubling the density would impact parking, and as the counselor noted, there'd be a 1,000-foot stretch with double-density parking, resulting in less than a full lane for resident vehicles, first responders, to include ambulance and fire trucks. And as a first responder myself for the last 20 years, I can tell you that decreases Increases in traffic because the residents of this development will have to drive everywhere to get to anything decreases livability. And my kid or my neighbor's kid being able to ride their bike in the street, or, I'm sorry, being unable to ride their bike in the street should this happen, decreases livability. So I would ask that the council deny the application as proposed, and thank you for your time.
Question.
Yeah.
You mentioned Dover is a substandard. Can you be more specific? What's wrong with it?
It's not standard width.
How wide is Dover? So it's not 30 feet wide?
There's a section of Dover which is east of Grandview that doesn't meet the minimum 30-foot width requirement. There's no sidewalks on the north side of the street, and none of those improvements would be included until the second phase of the development. That would force pedestrian traffic to either have to cross to the south sidewalk or share the lane of travel with construction traffic and vehicle traffic.
So if I understand you correctly, if this were approved and built out, eventually Dover would meet the current standards?
At some point in the future, it would.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So is Dover a partial street currently?
I deferred on that one.
Yeah. Okay. I can ask that one later.
Is it next to the first? Is it next to the first part of the development, or is the first part of the development in the back someplace?
The first part of the development would be the portion that deflects Crocker.
Oh, so it would not be affected?
Not with that first phase.
So...
My understanding was that the development entrance would come in off of Essex, not off of Crocker.
We'll have that addressed, too. Yes. Okay. Thank you. Okay, next is Robert Esch.
Robert Esch, E-S-E-H, 2615 Northwest Essex Avenue. Thank you for having me, listening to me tonight. I hope I can get this done quickly and clearly. My two issues I just want to address, one is which the application, the tree falling criteria, and the other is what falls under what is cluster housing. Under, I'm looking at page three of Hayden responses of the appeal, under B, the applicant meets tree falling criteria of ACD 2.208, where it talks, and we get into this argument of subjective, objective, and one part of that criteria where it begins, the community director, development director, and/or, and so on, warns that the falling of trees is because of respect, I'm paraphrasing here, disease, hazard, unsafe conditions, existing or proposed construction, so on, so forth. The only reason those trees would be a hazard or unsafe condition, and it is in a kind of reversed or twisted logic by Hayden, that the only reason why is because of Hayden's construction that would cause that damage to those trees to warrant, to become hazardous or unsafe. Just to say that for years, farmers have been working that field. They've been plowing, disking, having heavy equipment, right up to those trees. And those trees are pretty darn healthy still. And my neighbor just showed me here before the meeting, there is up in the D.R. Horton, a tree was left in one of the houses up there. It's a white oak, and it's right there in front of their house, pretty good size, good and healthy, and it was built close to the house with utilities next to it. And that's a real concern of my neighbors, of myself and my neighbors, coming from a farming family and all, is the removal of those oak trees. I don't care how many trees you plant, 500, 600, trees that aren't native to our area won't replace one of those darn trees. I want to go back to where the city, they also state that the city is required to approve the site plan, so on, so forth, because of the proximity to the proposed construction. Well, that's again, that's only because they're going to build so close that they've got to take them out, that they're going to damage them. So if they would just give the trees some buffer, as is you see around town in other constructions, that they have left those buffer zones, the trees are harder than you think. Don't give them any, you don't think they are. But also, really quick, I've noticed in here consistent, Hayden also says consistent with RS-10 zoning, RS-10 zoning. Well, what Hayden is proposing isn't RS-10 zoning, under that zoning. I don't know how they can relate anything back to it when, in fact, the zoning that they're proposing is something less than RS-10. The other one I want to go on to is about the filing ordinance, and that is page four under response B. And they talk as to, it will not have, paraphrasing, any, let's read, "The proposed filing is consistent with state standards and ordinance, and the proposed felling is not negatively impacting environmental quality of the area," which I disagree, "including that including limited to the protection of nearby trees, windbreaks, wildlife erosion, and also for down-to-sink value." Yes, it will have impact on wildlife. We have both witnessed and photographed deer using those trees as cover. We also have bluebirds, coyotes, hawks, crows with, I was reported to me that there's two crow nests in two separate of those oak trees there. Also during the spring or fall and winter, there is a migratory Canadian geese, Canada geese, which will fall under federal law, migratory law, that, you know, they use that for cover, they use that for feed, and I have a very, very, being there and seeing it for myself, I have to strongly disagree with that. Doesn't provide any beneficial habitat or cover, food or cover for wildlife. Now, in their other statement, "There is no record of trees on site providing habitat for sensitive or protected species. Based on these factors, the removal of oaks will not result in habitat degradation." Well, what was, or if ever, was a study done to determine that, just because there's no record, doesn't mean there is none that exists there. It just hasn't been a study done to determine that. I think I'll move on to, on page five, "The uniqueness size, maturity, structure, and historic value of the trees have been considered, and all other options for tree preservation has been exhausted. The director may require that the trees be determined to be unique in size, species size, maturity, structure, or historical values, or preserved." And I would like, would like the director to make that determination, because in my humble opinion, they are unique. There's fewer than, well, I don't give you the numbers off the top of my head, but they are a unique species that we're losing all the time here in Oregon. You know, coming skin on our farm, ooh, and remove those trees. They're too valuable. And when you say livability and things like that, no, they have monetary value. Cluster development. I'd like to read from, and you probably haven't, before you maybe, Article 11 of the, you know, Article 11 Lands Division and Plans Development, 11.405, optional nature. Cluster development is an optional form of development. It would seem that Hayden has pressed heavily to make you think otherwise. If you would go down to section 11.460, designation of permanent natural area. Now, the 20, minimum 20% of the acreage of the development area set aside as natural areas in cluster development should be designated as following priority orders, and I think there are orders, there's four of them. And in the first priority, they talk to, while they're valuable in South Albany area plan organization framework, but no mention, why aren't they valuable to us in North Albany? There's some question of that that wasn't ever addressed. I think all the trees, I mean, all the oak trees in, I don't care if it's north or south Albany, they're valuable. Third priority, for the natural area designation is protection for the environmentally sensitive areas, natural and scenic features of the area, and it goes on, the priority shall be satisfied in the following order. Well, these are the oak trees, and I would like, go down to G, or, excuse me, F. In one section of that land, there has to be a spring, because when they work that land, and it's wet down there, they've gotten equipments pretty well stuck down there in that one corner, so there's question if there's a spring in that one corner that I don't believe it was ever, that I believe has never been addressed. And a wooded area with five or more healthy trees over eight inches in diameter measuring four and a half feet from the ground. Well, we got those trees, and I, in this cluster development under the third priority, land that is developed, land that provides bike and walking trails that connect to existing or proposed parks and trails. Well, I didn't see it. I'm sorry. I didn't see any walking trails, parks, or anything. All I see is houses and, well, houses and street. Sidewalks aren't paths, walking paths. And J incorporates public parks, trails, trailheads, or open areas or open space designated in Parks, Recreational, and Open Space Plan, the North Albany Refinement Plan, and the South Albany Area Plan. And four, the fourth priority for natural area designation, create open spaces. I really didn't see that in their plans. And then C, under four, C, buffer between neighborhoods. All I see is wall-to-wall houses. To speak out the wetlands and who will maintain them, I know one individual who lives in a Hayden development up in Cluster Oak. I understand that the HOA did not maintain that, and resulted went back to city. Okay? Well, that's at our expense. Now, there's also an area underneath, well, who will? They talk about the wetlands, and if the HOA in that situation will not maintain it, well, it'll probably fall upon the city to maintain it. Another cost to us. And as far as, I have a real question, if this falls under, I'm sorry, I'm not too versed on this, but I'm trying to learn it. If that whole, under the definition of cluster housing, the preservation of wetlands and whatnot, green spaces, if you take into account the wetlands and the power lines, which are underneath, I guess they're PBA, high voltage lines, which really, I would think, would fall under the jurisdiction to take care of that. So I just kind of wonder if we meet that test of a true definition of a cluster housing I'll finish up here. I'm sorry, because I'm a bit tired, it's been 17 hours. I really think we should keep, we should look at this issue more closely in-house under a continuance of this hearing before we have to go and address it at Luba. I think we should take a deeper and a little closer look at this. There's just too many unanswered questions and concerns, and it's just, we need to take a closer look at this. Now, I could keep this in-house before we have to take that next step to Luba. But I would thank you for your time, and I hope you take that in consideration.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Robert.
Mayor.
Uh-huh. We just have two more on here. Do you want to take a break now?
Then we have the rest of it after that.
Yep, yep. Okay. All right. With that, folks, we will take a...
Let's hear the rest of the testimony first.
I'll take it in order, please.
We, did you want to take a break?
Yes, please.
Or not? Okay. We'll come back. We only have a couple more on here. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then, but we'll still open it up if others want to be able to speak, okay?
We love it.
All right. Okay, five-minute break, folks. Okay. Five-minute break, folks. That counselor back here.
Where's Bessie?
She was talking to John in the hall.
She looked just there.
Allison. Allison, could you tell Bessie, I think she was in the hall, that we're getting started? Okay. All right. I think we've got everyone, everyone going and ready, Allison? Okay. Thank you, folks, for allowing us to take a little break there. So next, who had signed up in opposition would be Steve Johnson. So, Steve?
Thank you. I have a little paper, bud.
Oh, no.
Hope I can do this without dragging on.
You can address.
Yes.
I'm Steve Johnson, J O H N S O N. I live at 2671 Northwest Essex. I'm on the, kind of the end of the road right there. We have three oak trees right beside us, three beautiful oak trees. Two weeks ago, I had five deer laying out under the trees, broad daylight, dogged in the, anyway. So, anyway, my, my, my point is, this is Preservation Month. Why aren't we preserving these beautiful trees? They're saying we can't, we can't put houses next to them, we can't put roads next to them, or sidewalks. I have proof right here on Bee Hollow Avenue, which is just a new subdivision just over the field, with a tree, a big oak tree, in the front yard of this house. Feet from the fire hydrant, from the sidewalk, from the house, from the walking path. It's not dead. I think this is a lie. I think they're lying to you about these trees dying. They're not dying, they're not going to die. This, this photo proves it, if you want to see the tree. It's a beautiful tree. So, I think this is bold, and I'm not trying to be, I'm just saying, this is bold. They're pulling one over, everybody's pulling one over on me. So, there is proof up there that it's not going to kill the trees. They can go around the trees. They can build houses fairly close to the trees, well, like within feet. They can. They can put fire hydrants, streets, sidewalks within feet of these trees. So, for them to tell you that, no, it'll kill the trees, not one. You can prune the trees, you can prune them, or they can, you can kind of go around them. You know, it's all, it's all about money. I understand that. I'm not, I'm not against them building houses. I'm against the cluster houses. I wish they'd move them back a little bit and kind of, because we have 10,000-foot lots. And I think it would be nice if they would move the cluster housing back a little bit and kind of, what's the word I want to use? Transition. Transition away from our houses. So, that's, that's my point is, if anybody wants to look at the photo, like, it's on Bee Hollow, so.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
You mentioned that you live on Essex.
2671.
Close to, to the empty lot, or the empty field? Right in there somewhere, is it?
See the three oak trees in the corner right there, right? Right there? Those three, my house is right there where you're at.
Oh, okay. Because I was looking to the other part of Essex, and I didn't see any trees there. Now I see what you're talking about.
Those trees of, the farmers-
They're not on the list to remove either.
They're not? Well, they are. They're not on my map if I'm looking at the right place. The farmer, you know, I live right there and I see how he farms, and he plows. He's plowing and tilling, you know, right up, you know, five feet from the trees. He's kind of got to go around the trees. You can't get it right on because of the limbs, but, you know, he's not killing the trees. It's not, it's not killing the trees. So, there's no reason, why can't they put a, those three trees, why can't they put a, I don't see any, like a little children's park, or, you know, a little children's, you know, a little, you know what I'm saying, like a park or little play area or whatever? It'd be perfect, that'd be perfect right there. So.
It looks like the one being removed is 40 inches.
I have two Franklin Maples, they're these beautiful yellow trees, but I found out they don't really like hot sun, direct sun.
One nine.
And those oak trees are shading my Franklin Maples, and they're just beautiful. And I have a neighbor across the street, he has a Franklin, I call them Franklin Maples. Well, the sun hits his tree and it's, fun at his tree. He's getting full. So, these trees are helping my trees.
Beautiful, yeah.
Forty inches.
But it's just beautiful. Now, if you've gone up there, this is beautiful. And this is a, this is, this is a way of living. You know, people, people here love that.
That's big.
We all, we are all gravitating, we're not complaining about the houses so much. We're complaining about these beautiful trees that are 150 years old.
Oh, no.
Probably the Indians were in this area. They probably were.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification.
Okay. Next, Brian Carroll.
This guy doesn't know anything about parks.
Yeah. Or open spaces, yeah.
Or open spaces or anything like that.
Good evening. My name is Brian Carroll. My last name is C A R R O L L. I live at 2123 Northwest Larriett Street in North Albany. And I thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and speak with you. I think you've certainly heard most of the issues that I, myself, my neighbors are concerned about there. I guess, from my standpoint, I look at this development and I knew that the development would go in. I think what we're talking about here is the type of development. And listening to the developer's attorney, Mr. Robinson, he would have you believe that your hands are tied. I don't believe that that is the case. I listened to Mr. Martino early on saying that cluster home developments are, they may be developed. I also heard that there was a need for this type of housing here, but there are other housing needs in the community. And the attorney basically said that that definition of need is very, very broad. Well, I think that what we're here tonight for, and what the planning commission had determined earlier, is that the community of Albany has the, the ability and the right to help determine the shape and type of community that they would like to see, and how it's developed, and how that development occurs. Not for an out-of-town developer to come in and tell us what we want our community to look like. I believe that the planning laws are there to give us that discretion, and even though they would have you believe that because of the need, we have to do what they're proposing to do, I don't believe that's the case. And if need be, going to Luba and having Luba basically say that, well, I think it's worth going to that point, because otherwise, what I'm hearing tonight is, they can come in and propose pretty much anything they want underneath the needs discussion, and basically they're saying you have to approve it. I don't think that's what Luba would say, and I don't think that's what the intention is here by the courts to basically force our hands or tie our hands, so, as a community. So, I believe that we need to look at the development and whether cluster development is appropriate here, and, or maybe a different type of development. It is zoned for RR10. The neighbors here, we don't have an army of attorneys to come forward, land use experts. When people purchased here, they purchased under the idea that they thought that it would be RR10, which is what it was owned. Now, basically, what we're hearing is, well, you know, the technicalities of it are that we may be able to put in tighter home developments if we meet certain criteria. Well, the term is still "may," and I believe that's the discretion that you have here, and that's the discretion that the planning committee exercised. And so I would ask you to support that. Just on a little note about traffic, I think that's been very well discussed and something that I think anyone here in this room probably has experienced in North Albany, if you've been up there at all. So, those changes that are occurring, the developers, I've heard at the other hearings, and maybe not so much tonight, but at other hearings, that they can't, they should not be held accountable for all the traffic issues that are going on or solving all of the traffic issues. I think that's an incremental approach to planning, if you take that discussion to heart. Because under that argument, then each one of the developers should have their development approved, and they can say, well, you can't hold us accountable for what's going on at the bridges going into, back into downtown Albany. Or you can't hold us accountable for what's happening at the intersection of Crocker and North Albany Road, Gibson Hill Road at the, or, excuse me, Gibson Hill Road and the traffic circle at North Albany Road. So, at what point, who is held accountable for that? I think it's all the developers collectively, and if not, like I said, it's incremental planning at that point. And so I think we need to take that big picture, and if our, if our code does not allow us to do that, then something needs to change in the code as you're, as you go through the process of updating. So, but, other than that, thank you for your time, and I appreciate what you do, and you know it's a tough seat to be sitting in. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brian.
Mayor, for, for the record, Brian is in charge of Lynn County Parks. I serve on Lynn County Park Commission with him. That's why I said he doesn't know anything about parks.
Yeah. Okay. All right. That was it on the list, and I think one lady wanted to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Diana Ritter, R I T T E R, and live at 2676 Northwest 18th Avenue, North Albany, to the corner of Whitmore and 18th, block from the-
We have a choice, no, we have the choice.
-Hipson Hill Fire Station, sorry. And two blocks from the field that we're talking about.
You might want to maybe move the mic a little bit closer.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, I just wanted to say something about us. My husband and I married in 2004 in our late 50s. We immediately found this lot in, with farmer round, on a three-way dead-end street, a level lot, and we built a very expensive wheelchair-accessible home. This is supposed to be our forever home, so I just want to say that we have a lot invested in our neighborhood, and we can't, being on social security now in '70, we can't just pick up and move. So, with that said, I want to take issue with the needed housing. Did I get, did I hear you right, Mayor Konopa?
Konopa, yeah.
Konopa, thank you. That you said that it's projected in 2005 or '06, that there would be 200 more homes needed by 2025 in Albany?
That's, that's what the plan stated, that there are, in the, you know, RS10 zoning, that there would be need, 200 homes needed, which has exceeded that already.
Okay. You just made my point for me. Because the thing is, the 148 homes that are proposed here, is 74 percent of that 200, I'm kind of nerdy, and yet, and they're two blocks from my house. Why do they have to all be in North Albany, all be cheek-to-jowl, take away the open spaces, take away the thousands of geese that circle over our head? Seriously, I, I love this. Twice a year, we have thousands of geese circling overhead and settling down in that field. It's one of the things I loved about this place, I'm talking about myself, I'm sorry, but I'm talking about quality of life. And we're having somebody come and say, we have to accommodate all 200 of the homes, of the homes. And Mr. Root accounted for, what, 100, more than 100 of new homes, plus the cheek-to-jowl ones east of this proposed development. We've made it, so we no longer need those houses. So, I, I think that that argument is moot, that we don't need more houses. And if we did, why do they all have to be in one place? The, I just want to suggest that there are several ways to go on this. One would be to deny the permit and just weather the storm, because I think it's worth it. The other would be to insist that the developer- The other would be to insist that the developer have much more open space, that the houses be, that the lot size be no smaller than 10,000 square feet. That takes them down to 100 houses. But if you had more open spaces, you could save those trees, have a place for kids to play, have a place for people to lock their dogs, have a place that is more livable. So I, I know this sounds kind of mean, but I think that it's greed that's going to ruin our neighborhood. So I really hope that you support us. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Ritter. Thank you. Okay. Was there anyone else?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Today, I looked on Zillow.
Oh, you'll need to come to the mic so it can record you, yes. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm all right?
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry, I lost track where my Chinese shop is. So I looked on Zillow today. There were 174 homes for sale in 97321, under the, under the cost of 800, 800,000, and does not include rentals. So, and that's only Zillow. Do we really need to have this?
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, was there anyone else? There was no one else on the list? Yes, sir. And then, and then Bill, did you have your hand up? Yeah, okay.
That was my wife, Diana. And I'm also at 2676 Northwest 18th Avenue. I wanted to talk about a couple of things. We got it, basically. A lot of people gone over a lot of things that are concerning me as well, but I was looking at some of the numbers. At the current plan that they have, with 147 lots, with an average of 7,000 square feet, they're building on just over a million square feet, 1 million, 36,000 square feet. So I assume that's what they can build on. I know they can't build the wetlands and there are other requirements and power line right-of-ways, places they can't build. So I'm going to assume they're, all that area is all buildable area that they're dealing If you insisted on RS10 zoning, that's 104 lots. If you were nice and generous to them, let them have 9,000 square foot lots, it's 115. It's still a lot of houses, but it's not nearly as many as they're proposing with the 148. And the lot, this problem with trapping, the houses will be far enough that it won't look like downtown, it'll look like North Albany. And if you look at that image, that moves controlling that, if you zoom in a little bit on the bottom oak tree and the three oak trees by the corner of Essex, you'll see there's an animal path running through there, running from Dover to that first oak and then it right up to the three oaks. Now, somebody's going back and forth on that area daily, I would guess. So I said I wasn't going to talk about the trees, but there you go. Pedestrian paths are another thing. I lived, my first home in Albany was in the development that is also southwest, 53rd, that area where all the streets are named after animals. I lived on Care Room. And my house was on the edge of the development and along that edge was a city park's own walking path that people enjoyed and I enjoyed it a lot. You know, I don't, I don't walk, but I could get through, when the ground was dry, I could get through there with my chair and it was very pleasant. If I go on the sidewalk, there's cars, there's traffic, there's every three feet that we don't have on the walking paths. It's not the same. They say they can't put in walking paths because they would interfere with the area, they're not allowed to develop. Their plot, plant, whatever it is. The lots numbered 1 through 17 are all very deep. They could be shortened slightly, 10 feet and a few along there. It would be on the edge of the area where they can't build, but it would be a very pleasant area, I would think, because it would have white green land right next to it and it's, it's quite a distance to walk. You'd have to bring it into the other area as well. The long block with all the houses close to each other, if you reduce the lot size to insist on RS10, you could have space to put a little footpath between the streets they're calling 23rd and B and not have this problem of having to walk half a mile to visit the guy across the fence from you. You could make shortcut through the walking path and, okay. There's been talking about putting streethomes on Grand View. Grand View is one of the main ways out of this area. Dover, right now, doesn't go through to Crocker. It goes into Muscine and you can get out that way, but that's fairly new. When we first lived here, the only way out of the area, south of that development, was through Grand View. At the intersection at Grand View and Gibson Hill is dangerous. Gibson Hill makes a turn, a curve right there, far enough, Gibson Hill, far enough. And in order to see, when you come out of Grand View, in order to see to your left, because of the curve in the road, you have to move way out into the Muscine. And people are running 50 miles an hour through that stretch. The speed limit's 45 and nobody goes that slow. I guess you can't, you can't see it on this view, but increasing the traffic at that intersection is going to be a problem. Now, I know at the last hearing that I went to, one of the applicants said, well, some of these problems people are complaining about are existing problems and why should we fix existing problems for you? And I think he misses a point. The intersection I just referred to is an existing problem, but you add a whole bunch more cars than it, it's going to get a lot, lot worse. So I'm not expecting the developer to fix these problems. I'm hoping he's not going to make them worse. And I don't think that's an expectation that's too extreme. It's a reasonable expectation, don't make things worse, they're bad enough as they are.
Okay.
That pretty much covers my items I wanted to cover, but I need questions from you folks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ritter.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And Bill, did you have something to say? Was there anyone else that was going to plan on wanting to speak also or just concur with what was spoke before? All right, okay, Bill?
My name is William Keakley, 2480 Northwest Robinson Lane, Albany. We're just north of the, the power lines there. I want to try to touch on just a few things I don't think have been considered. These homes are, are selling for $300,000 to $350,000 each. This is clustered housing and part of the clustered housing is that it's for low-income, very low-income and extremely low-income people. And I don't know, I would be challenged myself to be able to afford one of these houses. And I, and I'm thinking about if any of these people are in this situation, I think transportation's going to be an issue for them. And if you've been up and down Gibson or Crocker, walking is dangerous, like they're being at best. And I won't go through the, the traffic issues, but that's, that's what I'm bringing up here. The other thing is the RS10. I would, we've been there for 30-some years and so we've been through all the process of having to, needing to join the city and everything, but also being told that RS10 is what we would be. And the wetlands there, I think that Hayden Homes understood that they had those wetlands in that area and that, that was lost ground. And I suggest that the city changed it, I think it was to RS 6.5 or something like that, or anywhere that was compromised is made so that the wetlands can take up that 20% that is supposed to be used or set aside, that some gentleman mentioned earlier, I think, for parks, paths, recreation or whatever. And I suggest that, that, that 20% should not be wetlands because that is not the, what that 20% is supposed to be set aside for. And so Hayden Homes knew that they were going to lose the wetlands, because you can't build on them anyway. And so I think the city, which means we live in the area in particular, will get the short end of the deal in terms of the concentration of people there. There's no, sorry, I already mentioned that, no sidewalks on Crocker. You ever see a kid going down the stateboard on Crocker? I mean, these are, these are realities if you drive that every day and in the morning, kids who are riding their bike to school, and there are some that actually do that, getting from Crocker to the other side of Gibson is scary. I mean, I was seven cars back just last week. I don't usually drive in at school time, but this kid was trying to get across that street. There are buses, there are cars, they're all trying to get places and this kid has no way to get across that street, except take his life in his hands or maybe someone will stop the line of traffic that's going down that road and let him get across so that he can get down, get on the street, you know, get on the sidewalk. You don't ride on the street. So anyway, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
So, so Bill, you had a letter that was in our huge packet here and I think you mentioned something about sort of, kind of like during the flood. What did this area do during the '96 flood?
Oh, well, the land behind us typically in the winter, used to be devil from our fence line, actually the neighbors west of us, it would be into a third of their property, it would be three or four inches deep in water and it would go for 100, 150 feet. The grassy area that you see at the bottom where the VPA has their power lines, yeah, just above that tree line, because they, that's where they cut all the trees down. There's, there's, it used to be sort of a creek bed that went through there, but now there's like three channels because all the water, it used to come down naturally, would get spread out as it came downhill. Now there's asphalt on houses and even though they have those ponds there on that, the east side, north of us, that's all been developed and the water comes down and it shoots through instead of spreading out like it used to. During the flood time, well, our neighbor had done, there was water across the street and some work was done and they funneled, funneled it underground now and it comes out and it drops back into, back into the Crocker Creek, I think is what it's called. In some areas, that walk, that is five to six feet deep, that channel, whereas it used to be two or three. And so the water's going through at a pretty good clip and loss of habitat, I think in particular, is for, what I noticed the most is the frogs. I mean, it used to be just the total company for two months or however long their mating season was or whatever, and now if you hear a frog, you're, I mean, somehow their habitat's changed totally and they're just not, they're not in that area anymore. Anyway, and we also had fox down there last spring. So there's, there's a lot of wildlife. People have mentioned it, so nothing new.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Bill.
How do you spell your last name?
Yes. K-I-N, K-A-L-E-Y. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bill. Okay, I think that was it, that I'm also wanting to speak on opposition unless there was somebody on neutral, so, okay. All right. Thank you, folks. And does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony?
Mayor, we do have a rebuttal. We're going to let our traffic engineer go first, Mr. Carroll, and then I'll.
Okay, thank you.
Todd Mobley with Lancaster Engineering, last name's M-O-B-L-E-Y. We're at 321 Southwest Fourth Avenue, Suite 400 in Portland, 97204. We conducted the transportation impact study for the project, so I just wanted to respond to some of the transportation issues that were raised. First, maybe a little explanation about how the study's conducted. We heard about a number of development projects in North Albany that'll continue to add traffic. When we conduct our report, we do new traffic counts at the intersections we're analyzing. We add to that what we call in-process trips, which is traffic from those projects that are approved but not built yet. We work closely with city staff to make sure we get all of those included. We also add a growth rate to cover regional growth from, from other things outside of those specific developments that were approved. We add traffic from the proposed development on top of that and then we also do another scenario that looks at five years beyond buildout of the subdivision. So it's a pretty thorough workup of traffic volumes and we make sure we include, account for all of that growth along the way there. We heard about intersections in North Albany that are, that are at or near capacity. I want to talk about a few of those. The, the roundabout at Gibson Hill at North Albany Road, what we see there is the, all the traffic kind of concentrates on one approach because there's not very good connectivity yet in the rest of the transportation system. So everybody leaving the area kind of accumulates on, on that eastbound approach. So that's what, that's what leads to the congestion and the operation that would exceed the city's performance standard. But what it takes to fix that is really implementation of the rest of the street system. This site adds a, adds a pretty significant chunk of that with 23rd Street, which will go through the site, that's the collector. That will eventually continue on farther east and connect to the existing street system and once that connection's made, it'll provide a parallel route to Gibson Hill. It'll distribute those trips better around the roundabout, will increase capacity and improve operation at that intersection. So the roundabout itself really is the planned treatment for that intersection and can operate acceptably in the future, but it really needs the rest of the transportation system to develop that connectivity around it. We also heard about Spring Hill Road at Highway 20. At that intersection, there's TSP, Transportation System Plan. At that intersection, there's TSP, Transportation System Plan, identifies a project there for an additional southbound left turn lane that's reliant on ODOT to make some modifications to Highway 20. So that is the planned solution for that intersection. Also, wanted to point out, these are all mitigations that'll be necessary even without this project. If this property never developed, all of those same projects would still be needed, and intersection mitigations for these intersections would still be necessary for the city's transportation system plan. We heard a bit too about Grandview at Gibson Hill. We analyzed that from a safety standpoint in the transportation impact study. In the five-year crash history, we looked at the most recent five years of recorded crashes that ODOT keeps in a database. We did show only one intersection, or one crash, rather, at that intersection, which leads to a rate that's well below what's generally considered to be safe. So there's not a, there's not a crash history there that indicates that there's a safety problem at that intersection. And, let's see, just sort of generally, big picture, development does bring the mitigation and a lot of the necessary improvements to the transportation system. It's not an instance where we can wait for all of these transportation things to be fixed, then allow development. Really, it's the development that's the catalyst that allows these. For the roundabout, we need the street connectivity. Well, the street connectivity's not going to be built until subdivisions are created that bring those streets. Development pays transportation system development charges, which are used to fund transportation improvements. The traffic signal that's planned at Crocker and Gibson Hill was funded largely by transportation SDCs from a lot of the houses that have already been built up there. So we've taken a close look at this, we're aware of those intersections that are at or near capacity, but really it's development like this that brings the necessary tools to fix the transportation system. So I think that's all I had in my notes. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on transportation? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll try to respond to some of the other issues that were raised by the public. And again, I do, it's, you know, it's hard to listen to a long line of people come up and criticize a project that, you know, several members of this team have spent a lot of time very carefully crafting to make sure that it complies with the city's development code and best practices in each of our respective fields. But that's not uncommon, and a lot of the comments that we heard are comments we heard at the planning commission. And I do commend the folks who have shown up, a lot of the same comments we heard at the neighborhood meeting, which was a very long and raucous meeting, actually, as far as neighborhood meetings go. So I'm going to try to go through and correct the record in some, in some regards, and then address some of the issues that were, that were raised. But the first one relates specifically to the RS-10 zoning. There's, you know, I think I heard several people come up and basically communicate their understanding that the zoning had changed. This project is not proposed to change the zoning of the property. The property is zoned RS-10. What we are trying to do is subdivide the property for future single-family homes in conjunction with what the development code allows for RS-10 zoning. So specifically, we are pursuing cluster development, because this particular site meets the three eligibility criteria the city has in its code for cluster development. One, that it's zoned residential. Two, that it contains natural or other special features, including the wetlands, including the repairing corridor, and a longer list of natural or other special features. And then three, that there's a professional designer, and so we've got landscape architects, engineers, planners, all involved in putting this together. So because those three criteria are met, this project is eligible for cluster development. The cluster development allows, as staff stated, as in staff, as in the staff report, density at, for this particular property, for this particular zoning, of four units per acre. Based on the forty-seven and a half acres of this site, 190 units, 190 lots are permitted under the existing zoning, under the existing standards in the code on this piece of property. So the idea that 147 lots, that lots, 7,000 square feet in size, or even the couple that are smaller, that are down by 5,000, 4,000 square feet, are reflecting a change in zoning or somehow not permitted, I just want to make clear that we are not proposing a change in the zoning, that the existing zoning and the existing development code standards allow for the lot sizes and the number of lots. In fact, we're building well under the maximum that would be permitted on this property. Someone raised the issue of transition between existing neighborhoods and this new neighborhood. One of the requirements of the cluster development is for transition. Effectively, if you've got RS-10 cluster development next to existing RS-10 property, you're limited, the code requires that along the perimeter where those, that transition area exists, that the lots can be no smaller than 70% of the, of the zone, so 7,000 square feet. So you'll see that along the perimeter, around existing, where the project abuts existing subdivisions, all of the lots are 7,000 square feet or larger. And that is a lot size that's permitted regardless of whether it's cluster, a cluster development, or if it was a standard subdivision. As staff pointed out, I think succinctly in the staff report, for ADC 3.200, up to 50% of detached single-family lots may be up to 30% smaller, in this case, 7,000 square feet, in a standard subdivision. And then goes on to reiterate that under the cluster provisions, up to 190 units, 190 lots would be permitted on this particular property. So I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but, you know, there was, I think, some misunderstanding, perhaps, of what's being proposed, and I want to make clear, crystal clear, that what's proposed here is under the existing zoning and under the existing development code standards. Regarding the trees, I believe it was Mr. Azavito who said that there are ten oak trees being removed. And I want to just correct the record that there are only eight oak trees currently on that site, and we're proposing to save two of them, which means that six of them are planned for removal. Someone mentioned heritage trees. The city does have a heritage tree program that is, I think, designed to protect, preserve inventory trees of a significant historic or heritage value. None of the trees on this site are designated as heritage trees within the city's heritage tree program, so I just wanted to make that clear as well.
But, I mean, they would qualify for it. It's just it's never been pursued, yeah, when it comes to that program.
There was discussion about habitat and whether these trees were significant trees. So the city goes through a Goal Five inventory process to designate significant natural resources within, within the city. Those include habitat areas, those include significant tree growths. None of those areas are mapped on this particular property. So in, in our narrative, in the staff report, I'll let staff speak for themselves, but in our narrative, when we talk about the wildlife resources, the habitat resources, those do not show up on the city's inventories for this site. And this is acknowledging that the city, as part of the comprehensive planning process, has gone through and looks for and designated and inventoried those significant resources. And then, I guess, the final point I would make is that there was some discussion about the 1996 flood, and I just want to make clear that this property is nowhere within any sort of floodplains, so that's not an issue that would regulate this particular property. So unless there's any other questions, I'd turn it over to Mike.
Thanks. Let me see if I can do this in a couple of minutes, so we can all finish up tonight. Mayor Ken Open, Members of Council, Michael Robbins, on behalf of the applicant. Let me do two things. Mr. Azavito talked about the needed housing law in his review of the Goal Ten headnote. So let me just point out, this is probably as good a case as any, but it's representative of how Luba and the Court of Appeals decide needed housing applications. This was a denial of an application by a city council that applied subjective standards. It went up to Luba, Luba reversed the city and ordered it to apply, to approve the application. That's the consequence of reversal. And I don't say that to be disrespectful to this council or disrespectful to the citizens who've taken their time to come here tonight, but I point out that this case is not at all different from Grant's past. The applicant in Grant's past relied on an acknowledged conference plan to justify the needed housing standard under 303 Sub 1. The city applied subjective standards in violation of 307 Sub 4, and Luba reversed it. And that's simply because the law is very clear. And let me then go to the second point and now conclude. The obligation in these kinds of quasi-additional hearings is to apply the law. I understand that folks don't want to see this property developed in the way that it's proposed to be developed, but as long as we meet the clear and objective approval criteria by substantial evidence, which we have, it's an obligation to approve it. This is in the urban growth boundary. It's in the city. The city's plans acknowledge that it's going to be developed at this density for this kind of housing. I recognize what folks said tonight, they truly believe, and we respect and appreciate that. That doesn't change the focus, which is on the approval criteria. So what do you have before you tonight? You have an application by substantial evidence that meets the approval criteria, the clear and objective approval criteria, and I think you could even say it meets the subjective approval criteria, which go beyond the city's discretion and consider. Staff report recommended approval. The staff report recommends conditions of approval that are feasible to be achieved and with which we agree, and we will accomplish each of them. So we appreciate what folks have had to say tonight. I think, though, that this council, by reviewing the record, looking at the evidence and testimony, can conclude that we've satisfied our obligation under your approval criteria, and whether any of us like it or not, we are bound with the legislature tells us to do, which is, in this case, is to apply clear and objective criteria to the standard. Mayor, we appreciate your patience and your time tonight. We'd ask that you close the hearing and record, and that you follow your staff's recommendation and approve this application with the recommended condition of approval, and the applicant waves its final written argument. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Okay. Does counsel have any questions of the applicant?
Of the applicant, no.
Okay. Yeah, Rich, a staff.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Counselors, would you, Ray, and then Rich, and I think Bill?
Just a question of staff. The owners of the property prior to Hayden, could they, what process could, would they have had to go through to hypothetically cut down all of those oak trees? Or could they have done it just because they wanted to get some more farmland?
I think about, it would have been, so the, the trees are on a parcel greater than 20,000 square feet, they're greater than eight inches in diameter, 25 inches circumference. So they would have had to gotten a tree felling, site plan, review, site plan permit for tree felling to remove more than four trees at a time. So every four, they would have gotten a new permit.
Five, five or more.
Five or more.
Depends on the year, though, right? I mean, we haven't always had a tree, we haven't always had a, had a, had regulation for tree felling. The state always has, and if he was going to log, he would have had to have gone in and gotten a permit from.
But we have our 25-inch municipal code tree.
Well, what I'm hearing, I mean, in theory, I'm hearing that the owner could have gone in and logged four trees, come back a year later, and logged four more without any permitting?
Yes. That's.
But the 25-inch or more?
25 inches, they would have had to gotten a permit through Parks Department.
But anything less than that, they could have done and taken the lumber and done with it?
Yeah. So there's two, there's, David, correct me if I get, if I get this wrong here, but there's, there's sort of, there's a tree felling permit that is reviewed by the planning division, and there's a separate one for the larger trees that are reviewed by Parks, the Tree Commission, Parks Recreation Department. And, and then so the, the trees that the planning division reviews, if it's five or fewer.
Five or more would require site plan review.
Part site plan review.
So I guess I'm playing the devil's advocate, I'm playing the devil's advocate here, but I'm inferring from what you're saying, is that now Hayden owns the property, they can go in and take down four trees with impunity, wait for all this process to go through, and possibly take them, take them down.
Assuming that they couldn't otherwise go through a permitting process through the city tree commission. They deal with large trees that are at least 25 inches in diameter, or six and a half feet in circumference. So there may be a couple of species out here of these oak trees that they would have had to have gone through the tree commission, but for those that are less than those standards that the tree commission would review, then your scenario by taking four trees out?
The fact that they're trying to keep a couple of the bigger ones, okay.
But, but with your point, though, Ray, is on the other side of that, if there was no site plan application, and if somebody, a property owner, wanted to remove those trees, it could get denied. So, and they, they wouldn't be able to use the housing needs analysis as a reason to deny that.
Well, if you're farming, that's a whole different thing, though.
But it would still have to go through our, our tree permitting process.
I have, I have two. One for staff. Now, I heard several people talk about it was a choice to have cluster, a cluster program. And can staff elucidate, is it the city's choice, or is it the applicant's choice?
So the, there are two possibilities. They could have done a, just a typical subdivision if they wanted to, or they, they could have proposed to do a cluster subdivision. They proposed a cluster subdivision, and that was, that was their choice, that was their proposal, and so we evaluate it based on those criteria.
And given that, do we have a choice? If they say, and it fills all the, all the regulations that we would require for that, do we have a choice of whether or not that happens?
Of whether or not they?
Of whether or not they get to use a cluster designation?
No, we don't.
As long as they have?
As long as they meet the eligibility criteria, then, then they're, it's their choice.
Okay. And second, for legal counsel, we heard a lot of you have to, there's no choice, legislature says, you heard it. Is the applicant correct?
Without, I don't like to, let me say this. The representations by Mr. Robinson of the statutes are accurate, in my opinion, and I believe he is citing or, or is on, has the same opinion as staff. I believe our staff is correct in what the recommendation was about following the law. And that's.
So that's really our choice. We either follow the law or we don't.
Correct.
Not a good choice.
Yeah, Bill?
One comment on this, on this cluster proposal.
Wish it was a different name.
They, I have to assume they've met all the criteria to qualify as a cluster developer.
Yes, they have.
And there was a comment about the cost of the homes, and is there a connection between a cluster development and the cost of the home, and the idea of cluster development is, is it, it's more affordable housing, or is that not accurate at all?
That's not embodied in our cluster development standards in our codes.
But is that a, that's just a city standard, or is? But is that a, that's just a city standard, or is our standard, excuse me, different than state, or?
Well, our cluster development standards don't have anything that talks about what the price range can be, or if it's tailored for a certain class, if, whether it's low income or high income. It doesn't address that in the cluster development. It looks at other factors and not, not those factors in particular.
But, I mean, where's the win-win for the city? I mean, just higher density housing?
Well, but then, part of the idea of the cluster development is the restoration of areas that may not otherwise be restored.
Yeah.
And that's their main argument about that, is that they're proposing to restore a marginal quality repairing corridor from marginal to good. And so we're getting a benefit there of 81,000 square feet of area that's being restored to good quality, so it's enhancing the health of that natural resource feature.
If you don't mind, I'll also add that with a cluster development, you're, you're protecting or enhancing natural features. One of the overarching goals of our comprehensive plan for the city and its growth is that the growth be compact. We have, that allows more efficient provision of services to residents, and it keeps the city from having to sprawl out. It allows the densities in the city, and, and so for those reasons, allowing the, the whole area to be, not all developed, but getting the same or relatively similar number of units in a smaller amount of land, has those benefits of being consistent with our comprehensive plan, goals for compact development and compact city. So you protect the, you protect the natural features, you get the same, relatively same number of people that would otherwise be there, and so you kind of get those two things.
And you make more open space.
And you make, yeah, you make more open space.
It wouldn't here, because you can't use it there.
So, you know, what we're forced to do is, is to focus on any applicable review criteria that would justify a denial, if that was the direction that, that we decided to go. And I'm just not finding any. But I would like a clarification on, or a little better explanation on the RS-10 zoning. Explain to me why every lot isn't 10,000 square feet. I've read what's in there, but again, a little more background or justification to understand the idea behind lot size and how that changes with the cluster development.
So on the cluster development, under the purpose statement in section 11.400, it says that "Cluster developments may provide greater flexibility, reduced and/or varied lot sizes, and more variety in permitted uses." And so it says that "It's not the intent of cluster development to increase the overall housing density of property above the density that would have been allowed in a standard subdivision. Developments must still satisfy high-quality master planning and design requirements." So the idea here is that they're entitled to a certain amount of lots or density on the property. The entire property, 47 and a half acres, is zoned RS-10. So conceivably, notwithstanding the BPA easement, there, there could be as many as 190 lots in that RS-10 zone.
Right, I heard that.
So what they're doing is setting aside an area from development so that it's preserved in its natural state, and simply taking advantage of what they might have otherwise had over the whole property, and they're condensing it to a smaller section of land that'll be developed. And so not only that, but we're getting the benefit of going from 190 down to 147 lots. So they could have actually proposed as much as 190 lots in that same build-up area, but instead they're pulling that out.
So if you have an area that's zoned RS-10, and you don't want to make a cluster development, what does that, how does that dictate lot size?
So without, without cluster development, if the property was RS-10, for the areas of the property that they could develop, the average minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet, but that still allows for up to 30% of those lots to be smaller than that.
It's an average.
So it's an average minimum. So some lots will be smaller and some will be bigger.
Sure, sure. And then I guess my last observation is on the transportation, and I thought Mr. Mowley did a good job of explaining that, that, yeah, we do need some improvements and the ability to hire more capacity, but that's driven by development, and that's where the money comes from. And, you know, if it's needed now and there's no more money, I don't know how you ever fix it. It's, it's a vicious cycle. It's like a dog chasing its tail, but, you know, I think that's the way it works, so. I have no more questions. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions, the staff?
I guess, I just have a, the, the part of this where they're using the BPA right-of-way as open space bothers me, but I don't see where we have a choice to say that doesn't fit, because under the rules that I heard, it's a, it seems to fit within the, within the rules for cluster development. I guess from that perspective, I don't see a way out.
Any other questions? So, does anyone have any procedural questions they would like to raise at this time? Staff have anything? So, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Kellen brings up the power line easement. So if, if these lots were all 10,000 RS-10, would you be building into the power line easement to satisfy that, with 195 lots?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, if, if you're assuming 190 lots on the zone, there are a few intrusions that are allowed development-wise into the BPA easement, but not like a buildable lot where you'd have a dwelling unit within it. But I might add that if you subtract out the BPA easement, that totals about 4.28 acres, and in so doing, they could still make use of the rest of their property at a rate that's even higher than what's being proposed.
Yeah, so 4.7, that'd still be 160, they'd be able to put on it.
So basically, what I looked at here is the BPA easement area as well as the significant wetland area, which normally also could not be built on. Looking at both of those, realizing that some of that overlaps one another, between the two, there's 8.16 acres that are encumbered, but that still leaves 39.34 acres available to build on, and that, they could build 157 houses without taking advantage of any other density bonuses.
Yeah. Oh, there wasn't that argument.
Any other questions? All right. With that, I will declare the public hearing closed at 10:33 PM. And counsel, what would you like to do? No matter which direction, this would have to come back for findings for adoption.
I move that the city council approve as modified land use applications, SDO 517 and SP 1417, as conditioned in the May 2, 2018 staff report, as outlined on our pages, 43 to 46 of our staff, of the report we had for the meeting, and the email we received this afternoon saying that they were going to save the two oak trees.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right. Any discussion?
I think there's a choice.
Okay. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, all right. One no. Okay, and then that'll be coming back for findings in two weeks. Okay, all right. Thank you, folks. Okay, counsel, let's see.
I think today, should come to normal meeting and try to leave at seven o'clock, be at eight o'clock if your job's dropped, and wait in line two hours, you get on the, you get out.
We're still in the meeting.
Yes.
All right. Next on the agenda is business from the public. Is there anyone here that had an item to bring for? Okay, all right. Not seeing anyone. Okay, counsel, let's see. I've got a, I've got papers kind of scattered everywhere, so I've got to find where we're at here. Let's see. Yeah, I've got that, I don't have it in front of me now, so. Okay, you have an adoption of a resolution. This is for an FAA grant application, so. All right. That was a resolution on page 379.
Ray.
Okay, move to approve?
Make her do her job.
Ray made, yeah, I seconded it all.
All right. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So Chris, you stayed here all night for that. Okay, counsel, you have adoption consent calendar of just one item, some annual license renewals.
Move for adoption of the consent.
We need one tonight. Keep going, counsel.
Okay, any, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carry. Next is the Crown Zellerbach Gates improvements.
Yeah, the dam in Lebanon.
Yes.
That I was chastised for.
Okay.
What would you, oh, yeah, go ahead, Stacy.
I just get my report.
I think we read it.
I think there's been too much water under the table for working and getting the IGA with Lebanon to try and disrupt it by trying to say no on this, so let's make it happen.
Well, they're $750,000 that they're putting into it. We're getting some benefits, and I get to say, I told you so.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, yeah, second.
Question.
Stacy, who made the motion?
He did.
Mike, and then Rich had seconded. Okay, yep. Bill?
Well, I was just curious, there was only one bidder.
I think it's a difficult project, and just bidding, bidding late, late in the, in the spring, contractors were busy, and it is a project where you have to be able to implement resources.
Still under budget.
It is, and Wildish, you know, they've done work in this.
Oh, sure. Well, they're good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any more questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carry. All right, thank you, Stacy. Business from the council, Bessie, anything?
Well, I just want to make a comment, and I'll make it quick, because I know Mike has to go to Portland, but this is one example. I know in our counselor training that we had and whatever, we discussed this. Why in the world would we leave business from the public at the end of a three-hour public hearing? It doesn't make any sense to me. And also, we've got staff waiting back there. I mean, we know pretty much, you know, when it's going to be a long, long public hearing. I just think it's just a disservice to the staff. I mean, here, Chris waited all night long, she comes up here after the whole public hearing, and she doesn't even have to say a word, which, you know, is good, but I just think that we need to rethink that. I think that's very a disservice to the public.
But Bessie, when you do have attorneys, you do have citizens that have been, it's been advertised for them to be here for public hearing, that is scheduled business. Business from the public wouldn't have been anything scheduled, so it's not fair.
But we didn't have it, I mean, what would it hurt to have that business from the public upfront? It's not going to put any more hours on the lawyers, you know.
Well, but it, but, I mean.
Could I say something, Your Honor?
Yeah.
In the good old days, and if you go to the school board, if you go to the county, you always wait till the end of the meeting, and then you only get three minutes. So I think our schedule is much more.
But ours, but we move it all over the place. I'm sorry, we do, and I think it needs to be upfront and up. That's all I have.
Well, the county, business from the public is right after approval of the agenda. It's one of the first things.
Yeah.
At the county.
Yeah, they have it right away, so that, you know.
They've joined the civilized.
Different group of people.
Okay, anything else, Bessie?
It's a new day at the county, though.
Anything else this evening, Bessie?
Oh, no, it's not.
Okay, all right. Bill? Okay, Dick, anything? Okay, Rich? All right, Ray, Mike?
Negative.
Okay, and Mike, you're heading out, too, for Portland tonight, so, okay. Okay, no, I didn't have anything. How about Peter, did you?
See you back here in 20 hours.
Okay, yes, we do have budget.
Thanks a lot.
Budget committee meeting tomorrow night, so, yes, and I didn't have, did staff have anything? Jorge?
Yeah, I had something real quick about the brandish property I wanted to bring up.
Okay. Counsel, we got still one item.
So, the city has gone, I'll try to be brief here, probably take three minutes to do this.
Can you use the microphone?
Yes.
He doesn't have a's anymore.
Yeah, so the, the city, after going through an RFP process, got, was able to sell, to sell two of the parcels that you see up there, parcel one and parcel two. Now we have parcel three that didn't get, didn't make the sale on the current RFP process. So we now anticipate that the surrounding development occurring near this area and the market condition is likely improved since 2016. In 2016, when this parcel three was appraised, it was appraised at $940,000. So the option that we have today is, we have one person that is interested in buying this third parcel. There's others that express, you know, inquire about, about this property as well. So one of the things that we wanted to get from counsel is some direction in terms of how you want us to deal with this request. The option that we have is we can refresh the appraisal and see what the property appraises for now, and with that, we can actually go and hire a Realtor to market this property, or we can just do another RFP process, kind of leverage what we've done before, and get some bids on it. So given that we have this person that, the person that's interested is Miles Bretner, is the person that wants to purchase this third parcel, but like I said, there's other folks that have approached Ed Hodney with asking questions about the property as well. So we just wanted to know what counsel's desire is in terms of us getting a refresher for the appraisal we did in 2016, and whether we want to go with a Realtor or an RFP.
Question?
Yep.
Did he, does he know the cost that we had on it in the past?
I believe he saw the appraisal, right? Yeah. Nine forty.
He didn't, he didn't fall over in a dead faint and, you know.
No, I'll move up here, so.
I think we should get another appraisal. Prices have really gone up.
Besides changes in market condition, the one thing that the last appraisal did was it noted that it was basically undervaluing the property because there wasn't, it's a mixed-use commercial zoning, and it stated that it undervalued the property because there wasn't the adjacent demand to drive that type of development at that, at that point. Well, we now are going to have some significant development in the area in the near term. I would suggest that if we went forward with refreshing the appraisal based on market condition, that we would also ask them to include some sort of indicator as to what that, that margin is, so we would understand that and could, you could understand that and use that in negotiating a price for the property.
Sounds good. What, what kind of money are we talking about for the appraisal? Do we know?
We have not got an estimate. I don't recall what we paid in 2016, but it's a smaller effort than it was in 2016.
But it would be a refresher, refresher of the appraisal, right?
That's what it is, whether we get any discount related to that. I don't know that their, you know, their analysis still has to be done. I don't know if there's any savings from putting the document together.
Are we talking about $10,000, or $50,000, or $2,000?
No, I, I just can't recall. It's, I, for whatever reason, I have around $1,000, $2,000.
$1,000, $2,000, and, yeah, that's a no-brainer.
Get an appraisal.
And then come back with, once we have the appraisal, do we then want to do an RFP, or do we want to give it to a Realtor? It's none of a different question.
I guess my only reservation is if you check into an appraisal and find out it's a lot more money than $1,000 or $2,000, then there's got to be a value there to spend that money and be able to recover it, so.
If you'd like to give us a limit where you'd want us to check back in, like if it's over $5,000 or something, then that's, that's fine.
Is that a good round number?
How old are you, crazy?
December 2016.
Okay. All right. Got enough direction?
We do, yeah. And I'm, we're going to be assigning Seth Sherry to manage it. In the past, it was, it was Jeff and, and had worked on this, but we have our economic development manager, so I'm going to assign Seth to continue this process and get this appraised and bring that information back to us.
Okay.
Does he have experience in this?
Yeah.
Well, he just needs to, yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Jorge?
That's it.
Staff have anything else? So, okay. Next meeting is tomorrow night's budget, but we have May 21st work session, May 23rd